Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for February 23rd, 2022, at 7:02 PM. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our next order of business is roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Alder Allen said that he would be delayed. Alder Aratafrata?
Here.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Our next order of business, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 26th, 2022?
So moved.
Moved by Alder Herbst?
Second. Oh, I think Shannon.
Second by Shannon, excuse me, Alder Strassman. Discussion. Yes, Alder Gerhart.
Thank you. I just had one, maybe this is a question for Tracy, but for the the people that registered to speak, there are two people that are listed that were in person, but all the people that were registered online to speak are not included. I thought that was notable. Is that something that we always do? Or is that stipulated by rules associated with minutes? I'm just curious why we wouldn't include the online registrations?
So I typically do the minutes for the Committee of the Whole. So the clerk's office gives me a form, and I just really have to fill in the blanks, and that does not include that information. But we can look to potentially add that if that's something that would be of interest.
I think it's just because because I think we're going to be continuing with the Zoom into the future, and it's definitely an accessibility issue, right? People, some people are going to come to speak that could never make it to City Hall. I think it'd be worthwhile to look at including the online names.
Do you include names of all speakers in the council minutes? I don't even remember.
I don't think so. I've never seen it before. I've never noted it before.
So maybe it's just not anyone then for consistency?
Yeah, that's true, because I've never noticed it before, so maybe that's the discrepancy.
Should we just take this under advisement at this point, then you get back to us, Chad?
Yeah, I can do some research and see if we have what we've included in the past.
So I guess I'll make a motion to let Chad adjust the minutes about those speakers as determined at a later time. Does that work?
Sure. Do we have a second?
I think we already have a motion.
Pardon?
We already have a motion.
Oh, okay.
I guess you just found your motion.
Okay.
So then I would put the, this to a vote, then, if we had discussion, correct? Okay. All those in favor of the minutes of January 26th, 2022, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Moving on to item five, public appearances for non-agenda items. We have nobody in chambers or on Zoom. Moving on to item six, which is, our first item on the agenda item this evening is the Hub Update Presentation Discussion, and that will be given by Wade Thompson, Scott Endel. Wade or Scott, are you, which one are kicking it off?
And if I might, I'd like to say a couple of quick words before we get started, if I may.
That's fine, Scott. You have the floor, and then I'll let Wade go from there, take it from there.
Certainly, on behalf of the Park Commission and myself as your Parks Director, I'd like to, you know, offer a sincere thank you to the Planning Department, and, you know, specifically Wade for his leadership, dedication, and professional work with this park project. And I'm fully confident as we go through the presentation and Wade and his team presents this project to you, I think you are going to also realize the, you know, time and commitment and professional work that Wade and the Planning Department has put into this project. And at the end of the day, I, independent of, or no matter what we place in this, in this new park, the city is going to be and can be very proud of this, of this new park facility. It's going to be a great addition to our, to our park system, and a great neighborhood park for the neighbors in the Nine Springs area. So I certainly wanted to offer that public thank you to the Planning Department and Wade specifically, but looking very forward to this, to the development of this new park. It's going to be a great, a great addition, as I mentioned. So with that, I'll kick it to Wade, and I thank you.
One, one statement before Wade, before you speak. I'd like to hold all questions till the end of the presentation, please. All right, Wade, you do have a floor now. Thank you.
Hello, council, again, thanks for the opportunity. Scott, thanks for the kickoff and the comments. Again, we're here tonight to talk Phase One Final Design, Budget and Costs for our Hub Project. And we do have some folks here that will talk as well, but I think I'll let them introduce themselves as they, as they speak. So again, we'll breeze, breeze through some of this, but we'll spend some more time on some of these elements. So again, I just want to, you know, start off with kind of the big picture of our H and I, you know, why we're doing this. We'll talk about the neighborhood. Then we'll talk about our planning process. We'll talk about the components of this, of this Hub Phase One. And then we'll talk in real detail about what the, what the final design looks like. And then we'll get into the, I think probably the meat of the discussion, which is budget and costs. And then we will present some options for council to consider. And then obviously, we'll discuss, and then ultimately, staff is looking for some sense of direction in terms of the various options that we'll give you. Again, we just be looking for some, some direction moving, moving forward. And we'll talk more about, about what that means. So again, I think we're all familiar with the H and I, you know, I think, and then the Hub being a very important part of that, of that H and I thus far. I do want to, again, just spend some time on, on the geography of the site. You know, the Fish Hatch neighborhood and the corridor specifically. I think we all know the importance of that corridor to our city. Lately, we've been calling it our gateway. Lots going out there, lots of private investment, lots of city investment. I think this project reflects the next step of city investment in that, in that corridor. Again, I do want to point out, a lot of our city lives up there. Approximately 11%, 11% of our city's residents are in that neighborhood. And I think there's obviously more on the way. And I do just want to point out that, to my knowledge, you know, besides the golf course, there's literally no developed park space in that whole neighborhood. And what that also means is since we became a city in 1984, we have not invested park funds in any sense in that neighborhood. So again, I think that speaks to the, the scale and the scope of this, of the project that we'll talk, talk with you on tonight. So just really quickly with Hub Engagement, again, you've seen all these slides before, but I just want to reiterate the process that we, we went through to get here. It's been literally years in the making. Lots of grassroots, organic, reaching out to folks, public meetings, one-on-ones, work groups, design partners. And all those, those elements led to development of a concept which you've seen over the past, you know, about a year ago. And then it leads, it leads to a final design, which you'll see tonight. And I think before we get into final design and some other pieces, I do want to introduce one of our, our design partners, and that's Anne Christensen from the company Saris. And I think, well, folks in the room know what Saris is all about, but I think I'll let Anne maybe just introduce herself and talk about Saris's role in the project thus far, and where Saris sees their role going by the near future. So with Anne, I'll, with that, Anne, I'll kick it over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Wade. Good evening, council. Thanks for having me. Scott, I want to just reiterate exactly your compliments to Wade. The project itself and how this has developed is an incredible amount of work up to this point, and I want to encourage everyone that has been, has taken a part of this to really just keep pedaling, because you're almost there. The, the bike feature within this park, I, obviously, the Saris Foundation has, you know, we're, we're building a mission around, you know, building bike parks in the, in the area, and it's just a, it's just absolutely incredible how this project has developed. And I just want to say just two things about, you know, about the, about what's happening here and, and why this is so special. The, you know, the bike park as a feature is so incredible because it really does show how intentional you all have done when you think about what it is you're going to incorporate into this park to serve as many people as possible. And what I can tell you is I've, over the, over the course of, you know, being involved with this, with the foundation and, and learning about bike parks, I can tell you that this is a, this is a pretty, pretty significant miss with regards to a lot of our public spaces, is that they tend to say, you know, well, we put the playground in and that serves the kid and the family up to probably the age of eight. And then all of a sudden, it's team sports or other things that tend to sort of, you know, sort of doesn't encourage the team, that, you know, that kid that has some energy to burn and, and doesn't have anything that's welcoming them or interesting to them to visit the park. And I just want to say that I feel like the, you know, the idea of putting a bike park into, into your space is really going to just serve so many more. Those people especially that often just get left out of the conversation. And then the other thing that I'd like to just mention about, you know, this, this project in Fitchburg, Wisconsin, is that you have a really incredible, unique opportunity to, to have one of the first of these types of bike parks in the Midwest. If Mike Repiak was on the call, I think he would probably also reiterate, you know, where we could probably count on one hand in, within 250 miles of Madison, that there's, that there is another bike park, a free bike park without fee, okay? And that is really, really an awesome thing. You have an opportunity to really show that this is, that this is something that, you know, that you are, that you are supporting and putting in place, and it's, and it's going to be able to, it's actually going to invite all of these visitors as well. Lacrosse has one, Minneapolis has one. There is no longer one in Milwaukee, which actually was a four fee. There is one in the south side of Chicago. And that's what we can name off of one hand, and don't forget Leopold, who is just a few blocks away. But I'm telling you, I have talked to some parents who were, were at Leopold at one point, and they were saying that this saves them a trip of two hu, to, a two-hour drive they were taking their kid to the one and south side of Chicago to use, and that they were coming from Brookfield. So I just, like I said before, I'm just encouraging you all to keep pedaling and, and let's, let's get this, get this off the ground. Thanks, Wade.
Great, thank you, Anne. And then just to kind of, again, pick up on, you know, our concept, again, we've got a Phase One and a Phase Two. The Phase One is north side of Traceway Drive. That's in the, in the blue there on the map. And I'll call that enhanced park space, and again, we'll talk more about what that means. And then Phase Two is, is the south side of Traceway, the orange area, and that's, as the current concept defines it, as a more of a full-on community center, and we'll talk more about that as well. So I just want to kind of focus on the main components of Phase One. And in my head, there's basically four main components. There's a community or a park building. And I think as Scott and I kind of fleshed out what that building, you know, could and may look like, we kind of thought it potentially would serve as a new model for, for buildings at certain community parks. And again, we'll talk more about what that means. And I think ultimately would allow for a smaller Phase Two footprint in terms of a building on the south side of Traceway Drive. The second big piece is our outdoor covered hardcore. And at this point, we are proposing an ice rink. So what that feature will allow for is literally year-round access, both for recreation and, and social gatherings. And we'll show you some images of what that feature looks like. The third main component is kind of a playground area, kind of a catch-all, you know, yard game, socializing seating areas. And I think an element that we can think serves the spectrum of, of neighborhood and community residence from youth all the way to, to adults and seniors. And the fourth feature with, which Anne just alluded to, is I'll call it an all-wheels track, for lack of a better term. But just this idea of a track, a recreational feature, that pretty much serves anything on, on wheels, whether it's bikes, skateboards, scooters, et cetera. And as Anne mentioned, you know, we feel like it's an incredibly unique feature, not just in our park system, but regionally as well. So do you want to point out some givens? I'm just going to kind of, you know, do a broad brush of these, and then later in the presentation, we'll go back and pick at them a little bit more. So in terms of givens, as it relates to costs, I do want to point out that our estimates were created almost two years ago on April of 2020. Secondarily, we did, we didn't fully budget for certain components that were in our concept, and we'll talk, talk more about that as well. Third point is we are, I think as folks know, in a fairly inflated market. You know, the past couple of years, we've seen pretty high, pretty high inflation rates. And then with these types of projects, when you go from concept to final design, you are refining scope. And usually, when you refine scope, there are costs that, that come into the picture. So with that all in mind, again, we are, we are exceeding budget with, with current costs. And we did present various cost and budget scenarios to both our Parks Commission and our newly formed H and I Committee in February. So again, we'll, we'll present the same options to you tonight, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So again, the goal today is, is basically to gather feedback. You know, our, our final design is, is very close to final, but given budget, given cost, there's things that we need direction from the council on in terms of, you know, does something come out? Does something get modified? So those are the kinds of things we want to talk about tonight. Once we get that direction, you know, we'll complete that final design. And then actually, March 3rd, this, in a couple of weeks, we'll go back to our Park Commission to get a final recommendation from them on what they, what they would like to see with this final design. And then it gets a little bit, I don't want to say confusing, but maybe a little bit of a different process. But ultimately, staff is just trying to keep things moving with this process. So by March 8th, staff will prepare a resolution based on, on council feedback from tonight and from our Park Commission and our H and I Committee that will essentially identify very clearly what is in the scope of Phase One. So that'll go to council on March 8th. Our thought was just to have you guys think about it for two weeks. We don't envision a literal, literal referral back to those committees, because they've already weighed in, so to speak. And then it would come back to you March 22nd for a final vote. And once we've got that resolution approved in some manner, staff would have the marching orders for final design construction documents, and then we would put those out to bid. I should back up. Prior to that, we hope to have an open house, you know, COVID conditions pending, I guess. But once we have final design figured out, we do want to go back to the public again. And then, I guess, probably more towards midsummer, we would get those, those construction bids out, you know, get, get those document bids in, and then ultimately make a, a selection of a contractor, and then run that contract through our appropriate city approval processes. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mike and Rob, our consultants. I'll let them introduce themselves. But they're going to talk in more detail about final design details. And Mike, I'm going to go ahead and stop my share, and you can go ahead and start yours. Does that work for you?
Excuse me, sounds great.
As I get going here, Mike, if you want to use your cursor to kind of point to things that I'm, that I'm touching on, that'd be great.
Okay. We can see my screen. Is that just a verification? Okay. Rob, go ahead.
Robert Stein with EOR, doing the site civil design, working with Mike Zilke with Inberg Anderson in collaboration, kind of creating the whole, the whole concept here. I feel like I should compliment Wade before I get started, though. It seems to be. No, he has been amazing to work with, but in the interest of time, I'll jump into the site plan. So as some of you have probably seen before, this is kind of the, the overall plan. And I'll touch on the site elements and circulation and things, and then Mike will jump into more of the structures and give you kind of a detailed view of that. This is kind of, it's retained, it's basic concept from the concept master planning phase, but things have been shuffled around for various reasons. So as you can see, access to the site by car, there's a parking lot on the west portion of the site, and that goes to the back of the lot. It's put back there for a couple of reasons. One is that it, we wanted to kind of remove that from the street side to create, to make the park and some of the features of the park stand out and be kind of front-facing. Furthermore, it provides a lot of benefits as far as security and visibility. So emergency vehicles or service vehicles can go to the back of the site and see what's going on behind the building, all sides of the building, the bike course area. And it just improves circulation, and also conversations with the fire department. Kind of where that number seven and number two is, that creates an actual drivable fire lane for emergency vehicles. Yeah, so starting kind of where the cursor is in number seven, that is kind of the beginning of this pedestrian plaza space that wraps around and kind of radiates from that building, is kind of serves as the hub, if you will. And that's an area for informal gathering, games like cornhole or bags, different things like that that can maybe be reservable or permanent. Varied seating around there. And as you kind of take a hard, a dogleg right down there, you come to a fire pit area, gathering space, with a, with a little bit larger kind of plaza area where you can have tables and chairs that really feeds off of the, what's happening with the building and the orientation of the building and, and some of the, the visibility and the, the vision triangles that you get from within the building. Just to the north of that area, in kind of that general green hatched area, are some identified possible areas to deal with stormwater that we would going to treat as a feature, an amenity of the site, not just function. So pollinator habitats, native vegetation, while all, all while taking care of our stormwater needs. As you turn that corner, heading down, that spine continues. And that would be a, a strong connection to the original master plan to Phase Two. You know, as that progresses and gets developed, that, that connection will have to be adjusted. But, but the work is there to have a strong connection from both sides of Traceway. And then to the right, there is a, a signature play space. And we're looking at all poured-in-place safety surfacing, a multi-tiered, kind of really dynamic vertical play structure, which we have a little bit of imagery to, for as well. And that brings you down to the kind of the street side of the site, where you'll have access to the bike course in the, in the bottom right-hand corner there, which I'll touch on in a second here. Moving to the west, there is pavement that kind of goes all the way out to the street, and that's kind of envisioned as an area that if you were to have food trucks or loading needs, is that you could have some space right there to kind of stage for different events or unloading, maintenance needs. And then that carries through down to the front of the covered structure, where there'd be a buffer, landscape buffer, stormwater feature potentially, right in front of the, kind of separating the sidewalk and the covered structure. Yeah, and then the bike feature, which was alluded to earlier. Working with Mike and Imba, our, our consultants that we're working with, put together this really cool concept for a bike course and an all-wheels course component. And I will do my best here tonight, but kind of entry into the site would come in a one-way fashion, and that's really where the experience begins. It's not, it's not a access to the bike course, it becomes part of the bike course. And, and by having kind of a one-way circulation to that is that you can really kind of maximize the usable space in kind of a safe way. If you think about a nice skating rink, you know, they typically have people going in one direction, and then you can have a lot more organization. It's safer for everybody. But then that would have different features, rolling features, maybe some small trials and things. But a surface that accommodates all wheels, as we've spoken to before. And moving up into the site, you see kind of a plate of spaghetti up there. But basically, what that is, is varied, varied routes for different skill levels and abilities. And, and what Anna talked about, kind of one of the goals of this is not a, this is not a reproduction of what's happening in Aldo Leopold. This is something very different, and, and we're, we're doing different things like trials and boardwalks and little gravity falls and jumps, things that will captivate the complete range of users in, in difficulty levels. So it's really, it's really a one-of-a-kind for this area, and combined with everything else in the park, it just, it really becomes a one-of-a-kind park space. And that surfacing, as proposed, would be like a chip seal surface, which would be far, far less maintenance cost for the city. It costs a little more on the front end, but you easily make that up by installing that, that chip seal surface. Okay. And this is just some imagery of some of the potential features of that bike and all-wheel course. Look to the next one. And there's a tiny playground. That's some imagery of some of the play elements you're looking at. So pretty dynamic, kind of a three-story going to a two-story with connective play elements. There's a lot of accessible features. Swings, and then a two-to-five structure as well, and some shade elements. So this is kind of sitting out in a void, but I wanted to include it to kind of show what we're envisioning for this space. There's another angle, and I think Mike will be talking about some of the other elements after this.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Yes, as Rob mentioned, I'm Mike Zilke. I'm an architect with Inberg Anderson, and we've been working with Wade and his team for the master plan and this kind of exciting start on the schematic design. So I want to take you through some of the building structures, both building structures, and then show you some of the imagery as well with that. So starting with the plan, on the right side, this is the community building, and on the left side is kind of the proposed covered structure. And we're putting them, this is, as it's planned right now, kind of the relationship between the two. So how they sit on here is actually how they sit on the site. But I'm going to start with the community building and kind of run through that a little bit first. So, so the community building is kind of set up so that we kind of have a bar. We'll call this kind of the service bar on the left side, or towards the west side of the building. I'm sorry, on the site. And it's on there, not only does it kind of serve the overall building itself, but it's really kind of meant to serve the rest of the site. And I can get into that a little bit here. So on the right side of the building, we have two kind of community rooms. There's a movable wall that splits the two, and so it could become one large community room, or it can be kind of separated into two separate community rooms. So walking through this, and then splitting those two is our main corridor, which has access both off of Traceway and north to the site. So walking a little bit through the plan here, starting at the entry, we kind of have this gathering space where a mobile info desk could be there, you know, welcoming guests that are coming through there. This is also mobile, so you can move it to another room. But right off of there would be an office space, and this office space would be more like a hoteling space where multiple users could use this office, but it's big enough to have two to three people in there. So not only can be for observation here, but it could be a one-on-one meeting space. It could be a place where a resident wants to work on, needs some help to work on a resume or something like that. But it's kind of meant to be kind of that service space for the community. Moving to the north, we have both our restrooms, and the restrooms have both openings, both to the inside of the building, but you can see a couple of doors that face to the But you can see a couple of doors that face to the covered structure to allow access from the exterior as well. Uh we have a storage space and a mechanical space. The storage space you'll see in some of that will is an area that can be used and it's got a roll down window. Again, another way that, you know, if there was skate rentals or any type of other things, there's an interaction both from the building to the site. Um we have a small mechanical room there servicing the building and then we have a warming kitchen up top. Again, this warming kitchen, uh it's not a full commercial kitchen, but it is a warming commi- kitchen. And that can be used both to service the inside of these meeting spaces, but could also be used at certain times as a concession. With this uh transaction window heading out towards the covered porch. Again, mentioned, um we have a seven hundred and fifty square foot meeting room on the south side of the building. And about a six hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Um this gives you just kind of, there's about thirty-five chairs in there, just gives you kind of a visual understanding of how big these spaces are. Now, as Rob mentioned, this building really kind of the site, this building really kind of uh um is addressed to the site a little bit. We have a kinked angle through here and that really kind of helps early on the design to open up our view shed here. But this part of the building you'll see is um a lot of glass here. And the intent on that design is really to extend out to the site. We do have a roll down or roll up door, glass door here. So on nice days, you could roll this up and kind of have free access and treat this as kind of a different welcoming room. And really kind of extend from inside to outside. On the backside is a smaller covered porch that really helps to start extend to the rest of the site. So on the left side, this is our covered structure that we have. Um the gray area would be this hard surface that we have. And it's really sized initially for, you can see this outer one, this is kind of, this is a hockey rink. I shouldn't say hockey, this is a nice skating rink, but it's kind of sized based on a three-on-three hockey size. Um that's the outer ring. The inner side, you can see it's a basketball uh court through here. And then we have spaces for pickleball courts on the left side. We kind of separated those two so that you could still have basketball playing and still have pickleball on the on the left side. On the backdrop, you'll see this is a uh uh enclosure that cr- that has the chiller for the ice rink. That would be underneath there, but it also creates a backdrop for this whole space. So, you know, the intention for this is not just for basketball and sports, but it's also intended for other things such as, you know. Could be uh art shows, it could be farmers markets, and it could also be for performances that you may have. Or any other type of kind of gatherings and engagements like that. So it's really meant to be kind of that multi-use type space. Looking over a quick section, real start section, and this is really kind of put on there. This dash line is a twenty-foot dimension and that's really optimal for a basketball court. So it's all kind of made out of steel and you'll get a better view in a in about one minute here. But it's kind of showed there to see, to really kind of show you that, you know, gives enough space for playing basketball underneath here. So let me go to some views of this. Okay, sorry for the moving around and everything, just trying to get my right spot. Um so our first image, this is an image looking east on traceway. And you can see, here's our covered structure in the front. You can see our 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 backdrop area where the chiller would be and you can see the community building down towards the end here. So what's really important with this is that when you think of this covered structure, you think of a really tall kind of piece. And where it may be tall in relationship to people, I think what it's really nice to do is, and you can see through here, is how it ties within the building. Itself in both scales and proportion, but it also brings itself up towards the traceway street. It really kind of creates that unifying presence through there. Um you know, the covered structure itself is great for um sun control. It's great for keeping weather out as well. Um you know, and the materials on this, uh it's it's pretty straightforward. We're using steel structure that um kind of flies up. You can see where it kicks up this piece and it has a smaller piece on both ends. The space where it kicks up is follows the basketball court. So we lift it up to make sure we get our twenty feet distance uh through there. And then on either end, we're dropping it down to about fourteen foot eight underneath it and it does it twofold. So on this backside, you know, this can be kind of a performance end to it, on either side it could be a performance end. But in kind of the scale and massing of this down the street, it helps step down both on the west side. And it's helped steps down towards the building on the opposite side. Um so there'd be a mixture of brick and block on this. Um we would have a wood surface underneath as um kind of a warm wood surface underneath that roof deck. And then it would be painted steel. You can also see some a brise lay, which really helps for sun control. Um but it also again starts to tie into the building a little bit more as we move down. There, that's better. Better, okay. So another shot here, this is looking back at this um retain or this wall that's on the end. You can see our drop down area down here, but this wall here is is not only a backdrop, but we kind of envisioned that as kind of an art piece. You know, it'd be uh something where the community could, you know, be hired or volunteer to create a mural. And it's on there for so long, but it creates kind of an area to have some type of neighborhood involvement on the art. And this is not just the only spot that we're also, as we move forward, can be found inside the building as well. You can see the warm wood that's on here, we are popping skylights through here uh to get a little bit more light into there, diffuse the light down through there. Moving to the east side of the covered structure, again, you can see what I was alluding to is it starts to drop down. And starts to drop the scale down to the community building itself and really tie in some of the features together. They're really kind of feel unified. So the materials on the community building. Um and you can see how the plan really relates and starts to pull itself up in three dimensions. We have kind of our service side that really is facing towards the court and towards the north. We have our community room side facing towards the east. And then we popped up the um about a story and a half kind of central spine through there. And that really helps to bring in some light that you can see up through the top here. But on a building like this, when you get a lot of community involvement, we want to really make sure our materials are durable. So again, we're bringing stone and brick onto the buildings where it really touches the ground. And then areas where we may have either wood or fiber cement boards are in areas that are kind of lifted up a little bit higher. But you start to see some of the architecture pull between both of those. Taking a step back, um so this is a winter shot here, um obviously. Um but it kind of shows the ice rink through there on a snowy day. Um what you're not seeing in these renderings, there would be lighting, light fixtures within this covered structure. Um so at nighttime, it would, you know, generally light up the space. And the covered structure is also great um for ice, for the ice rink as well. Not only does it kind of keep the snow out, but it also helps to keep the sun out on sunny days. So that when the sun starts to melt the ice, it's not wor- it's not making the equipment work as hard. Um moving on, taking a look, um so we're on, we're up on the northwest side, looking back at our community building. From the backside, you can still see the covered structure to our right. So again, this is a, this is another shot of um the community building, kind of seeing that um west side of the building. You have their, your door here from the storage reaching out, your bathroom doors reaching out. And then this is a service window that's reaching out to the north that could be used for concessions. Uh throughout any different time. Again, you're you're pulling this central spine through here, creating this access from the north into the building. This covered structure again would have the same type of detailing, a nice warm wood soffit through there. Um there would be some painted steel uh through there to really make it a little bit lighter on there and try to give a little, as much space out here. This is a place for picnics again, it starts to attach to the building, but then reach out back to the site. Taking a look on the northeast corner back at the building. And I think this is what Rob was alluding to a little bit here. You can start to see how uh our, the fire pit through here and our game area and how it attaches to the spine here. And then how it relates to the building. So this is mostly glass that runs through this backside here. Um it's north and east facing, so getting a lot of solar sun. Um don't need to shade it as much in that time. And you can see the door here where on a beautiful day, you can lift that up. You really have that inside out kind of flow, the extension out to the fire pit, out to um the rest of the site on the backside of that building. Oh, I went the wrong way. Just another um another view here, but this really kind of gives you the understanding of how close kind of that playground area is. And so you have that connection between the inside of the building, this central spine and gathering spots, which has seating around there. And then it's, you know, some small boulders that run through there to create that boundary between this and the play area. So there's great areas for adults or um um people that are supervising their kids out there. To not only engage with other people, but also keep an eye on their kids as they're playing. And now we're taking a look towards the front, um looking back. And again, I want to reiterate kind of the covered structure. And you can kind of see that tiered effect and how they're brought up to it, but then kind of remain within the scale of one another. And really kind of tie themselves together. We create this space that's just off the sidewalk here as another kind of entry approach space. But really kind of keeping the buildings, we're, you know, splitting that by keeping the building close, but still kind of creating that interaction space in front of the building. So one thing that we were looking at was is to do geothermal for the building itself. And the geothermal would be back um as one potential area into the re- you know, the rain gardens, um stormwater areas in the back. But another feature we're looking at is is uh solar panels. Um and at least have it set up for solar panels through here. You can see them kind of marching along the top here, but they're with the backside of this two uh story and a half space, they're kind of tucked in there. But kind of those two combined really kind of makes this building and kind of the site really sustainable at that point. Um you know, between those two, you know, you could potentially get to being net zero at some point with kind of those features as well. So this is another, just another shot in the front. You can see kind of an open glass idea, really trying to reach in and out of that building as well. You know, we're creating overhangs and you can see um a uh, you know, a pergola on the front here. And we're really trying to keep out the sun, being conscious about um glare and and bringing in unwanted heat at times. Um but you do kind of get that kind of open feel through here and kind of feel the architecture between the two. And last is a um is a section of the building. And I think this is a good, a good shot to really kind of show you what the insides, obviously not quite developed through here. But that gives you kind of the service side over here that really supports our larger open space that we have on the east side of the building. You can see there are about sixteen feet um of space in here, so it's a nice tall space. You see plenty of glass that runs through there, but this corridor becomes a little bit taller. And what it does is allows our clear story light to come in uh deeper into the building. And allows even more light to kind of pop through into the secondary side into here. So we kind of want this filled with light and be a a warm and welcoming space. And I think that there's many opportunities in this building, both inside and outside, to integrate art into the building. And really kind of make this kind of a showcase piece. Wade?
Do you mind us stopping your share mic and then I'll I'll go ahead and get your mind again?
Yeah, yeah. Stop here.
Okay, just in in terms of timing, I've got about ten minutes, five to ten minutes left of presentation. Then certainly we can take any, any questions or comments that the council might have. Just want to add on to Mike and Rob's um presentation. You know, we have talked to our clerk Tracy and I think um the building is set up. Uh if at a any point in the future, it wants to become a polling place, you know, it would be available for that as well. So I think something to, to keep, keep in mind as well as we talk about that, that feature. All right, so budget and cost. I just want to remind people again of kind of the main four components, you know, Mike and Rob did a real nice job identifying what those are. Uh but again, our our building, our outdoor covered hardcore, our playground and associated areas, and then our all wheels track. And again, how those lay out on the site, we've got outdoor structure, we've got building, we've got playground, associated features. And then we've got pump track. And again, Mike just showed you images of of all those features. Um and again, kind of going back to that given slide that I I talked about earlier, I'd like to flesh it out a little bit more. Um again, our first given was, our estimates are, you know, a little bit old, two years old. Um in the construction industry, we're seeing fifteen percent inflation in the past two years. So what was two years ago, two and a half million dollars is now roughly two point nine. So I think that's something to keep in mind as we talk, you know, budget and cost here. Um again, initially, we didn't budget for everything, uh we knew that going in. The big thing we didn't budget for was the outdoor covered structure. And again, with the current design, that's clocking in at at one point five million. So that's, you know, something to to keep in mind as well. And then the third point, again, as we refine scope, um costs are li- are likely to rise. I think one really good example of that is our our all wheels track. Now, as Ann mentioned, these features are are pretty much brand new in in the country, they're an emerging trend. So we didn't quite know what what that track would ultimately look like. Um so in hindsight, we had a really low estimate for that that pump track. Um and it's and it's, it came in more than we we thought it would. So these are just examples of why the numbers we're seeing now are exceeding the the budget that we we identified, you know, over a year ago. So let's talk about budget. So right now, you know, after we get Mike and Rob paid, we'll have approximately two point five million dollars. Uh two, four, four, seven, eight hundred. So the the things we did account for, again, in that, in that two point five are these five things that you see right here. So the building, including furniture, the playground, all wheels track, other site work. And then a construction contingency, which I believe is um. Mike, maybe help me out, roughly ten percent. Chances are, we will not spend all that. I've been talking with Tracy Foss, who managed the fire station uh construction. I think the contingency is more like one percent of the of the construction cost. So this number again is is high, but it it's built in for any, you know, contingencies we might need um as we begin construction. So all these numbers here get you to that three point five, which again is is well over our our two point five. And then we've got that additional one point five, which again were things that we didn't account for in the budget. Um and that is the outdoor covered hardcore area and that's coming in at about eight hundred thousand dollars. And then the ice rink, which we um didn't include in the concept either, this kind of came, came recently in terms of a, of an element. And we can explain why that, why that happened. But that's about seven hundred thousand dollars. So again, this is, you know, one point five plus three point five gets you to that current final design budget. In terms of where we're at now with with all the bells and whistles. So I think what that leads to is is what are our options? You know, I think generally speaking, if the the desire is to keep the integrity of our phase one final design. We will have to identify other potential funding sources and or cost reductions. So talking first about other funding sources, um couple options here. Um basically, as it relates specifically to the all wheels track, there is an opportunity to get, let's just call it two hundred and twenty-five thousand-ish. From external sources, one being a Dane County grant program. We applied last year, um we didn't get funded, but they said if you come back next year, we'll get you seventy-five thousand dollars. We just got an email today confirming that. Um my thought is with this revised design, with this um specific cost, we go back to them and ask for another seventy-five. For a total of one fifty, and I think we'd be very competitive in terms of of getting that one fifty, but again, it's not guaranteed. But that is is an option. And then as we've talked about with Saris, you know, I think there's an opportunity to to raise some money. Certainly, we won't hold them to any. to raise some money. Certainly, we won't hold them to any any um, specific amount. But I'm just throwing out seventy five thousand dollars as a potential fundraising goal um, over the next, you know, six months. I think we'll get a really good sense of whether or not that's that's achievable. Uh, the second potential funding source would be future park fund dedication funds. Um, and we can talk more about that um, in the corridor. The third option would be some phase two reallocation. We'll talk more about that. And then, of course, there's potential other other sources as well. So as it relates to phase two, again, this concept needs refinement. We we knew that um, that that's part of the planning process. And it is also subject to land acquisition. But as of now, our phase two budget is approximately five million dollars. And again, that is for a large footprint community center um, on the south side of Traceway Drive. Now, what staff is proposing is essentially two options for phase two. Um, the first option would be a smaller building. Um, we initially ballparked the building at twenty three thousand square feet, and that's that's pretty big. For context, our existing city community center and senior center is seventeen thousand square feet. Uh, but the reason we we sized that so big was we initially thought first T, um, which is a nonprofit golfing youth education group, they were going to be a partner in that building. Uh, they were going to have space in that building, so we sized the building uh, to accommodate them as well. They've since left the picture as a partner. Um, and similarly, we have developed a our phase one building in a manner that we feel like mitigates or minimizes the need for certain amenities in phase two. Um, and keep in mind, we've got about thirty five hundred square feet in that in that phase one building as well. And then if we do proceed with a phase two building on a smaller scale, again, I think there'd be opportunities for for city staff space. Um, maybe golf course management, you know, operations out of that facility. Um, certainly, we could expand capacity for community rooms. You know, we are going to have some on the north side. But there could be additional capacity on the on the south side as well. Uh, the third piece is the potential for a service provider space. Um, so this would be opportunities for leasing space to neighborhood program and service providers to provide services to our residents. And then we would get, you know, revenues from that um, that lease as well. Now, as of right now, we've estimated about two hundred and forty three dollars per square foot for that that smaller footprint building. So ultimately, what that means is if we do do a building down there and depending on the size of the building, we would have a surplus of of that current phase two funds, which again is is roughly five million. So that's option one, essentially a smaller phase two footprint. And then excess phase two funds could go to cover cover phase one. The second option for phase two would be a bare bones pocket park with no building. Um, basically, just a nice kind of green, green lawn area. You know, kind of a passive park space on that we think again would would complement the the more active north side of the of the hub. And again, this would obviously create a another surplus of of phase two funds. So that's a kind of part A of this equation. Part B would be cost reductions. So the list you see in front of you here is um, a list Mike put together. And these are basically relative to reducing costs for our our building. And there's all sorts of things we can do to reduce costs. I'm not going to get into all of them, but um, I guess staff has identified a few elements in red that we think we feel pretty good about um, reducing and not losing the the integrity of the site. I think foremost among those would be reducing square footage of the building by a hundred fifty square feet. So if you see this purple area here, that would just get shaved off the the northern end of the building. And then the the building would get uh, downsized a bit. And certainly, we could talk about these uh, if folks would like in in further detail. And then I think another big thing to think about here in terms of cost reductions is that outdoor covered hardcore. Again, we didn't initially budget for it. Um, you know, we're going with all the bells and whistles right now, to be honest. It's it's full scale. It's it's year round. Um, you know, it's it's a pretty nice feature, but the cost tag is the price tag is is reflective of that. So we basically have four options at this point. We can do a covered hardcore with ice rink, you know, year round feature. We could do a covered hardcore without ice rink, basically creating a a seasonal feature. We could do a partial or a non-covered hardcore, basically a basketball court you know, type type surface with maybe a little roof on the end uh, to kind of house, you know, concerts or or movie nights or or those sorts of things. And then I think the fourth option would be just a grass or an open play area. And as you go from one to four, obviously, the cost will will be reduced. So what that leads to is this idea of options. Uh, I think there's four options in front of us. Um, and I'll try to succinctly explain them. There's a current design, which is all the bells and whistles we've talked about and doing that now. Um, you know, in this construction season, and what that means is additional funds will be needed. Uh, second option is current design, which again, all the bells and whistles, but phased, meaning this year and next year. Um, with that scenario, we still would need additional funds. Uh, the third option would be a modified design, which means cost reductions, uh, some of the things we talked about. And doing that all now. Fourth option would be modified design with with cost reductions in a phased approach. So as it relates to three options, three and four, I think the questions before us are reductions at what level, meaning are we getting really close to budget with these reductions? Or are we still exceeding budget by a by a certain amount? And if we are still exceeding budget, then again, additional funds will be needed. So bear with me wrapping up here. So I think what that leads to is this idea of potentially phasing phase one into a one A and a one B. Uh, one A would take place this year, and I think would entail what I call the core of the site. The community building, the playground, and the parking lot and landscaping. Phase one B would take place next year. It would entail some of the bigger ticket items, the pump track. Um, after we secure both Dane County grant funds and partner funds in the next hopefully six to nine months. And then the covered hardcore with or without with or without an ice rink. So what staff is ultimately going to be recommending, again, this is just a recommendation. We understand you guys are um, you know, this is your call. You have different considerations than we do, but we would recommend a modified design with specific cost reductions, meaning we still exceed our phase one budget. And then we would also phase it into that phase one A this year and phase one B next year. And to make up that additional funding, staff would be proposing using phase two funds, as we've discussed, and future park fund dedication funds if available and relevant to this this geographical area. So kind of what that means, again, we we currently have our budget here uh, with some recommendations of cost reduction that staff feels pretty good with. That gets us down a little bit, but we're still, again, pretty sizably over budget at at three point four. I do want to point out that we also have a an award pending from Dane County, uh, C D B G in the manner of a hundred thousand dollars. There's a lot of strings attached to that money, and we're trying to find out what those strings are. But assuming the city is comfortable with those strings, that would be additional funding that could go to to cover the cost of the building. And then phase one B, um, again, is is the pump track and uh, the the covered hardcore. Again, we're envisioning hopefully some additional monies coming in at two twenty five. Um, that that knocks us down a little bit, but again, we're still, it's a big cost. So again, at the end of the day here, uh, substantial additional funds would still be needed. And literally my last slide, obviously want to talk about management. Um, and this again depend depends on what what ultimately gets decided with final design, but we foresee two scenarios. Option one, um, ballpark sitting at about sixty five to seventy seventy grand annually. And this would entail a staffed building with existing park and rec staff, as well as our neighborhood navigators and some new part-time city staff, rec staff. Um, this would allow for a lot of access to the building. Um, the building would be open when staffed and reserved. Basically, meaning weekday and weekend hours, and we have all those hours figured out if if folks want to discuss that. And we would have some variation of of seasons or hours in terms of of seasons as well. Option two would be a um, a lesser cost, roughly thirty to thirty five thousand per year. Um, again, a staffed building with existing park and rec staff, as well as our neighborhood navigators. Um, but this would essentially mean no new staff, which means reduced hours for the for the building. Basically, reduce weekday hours and no weekend hours, um, unless unless the building was reserved. And if it is reserved, we would have a building attendant that would be covered by the cost of of the reservation. All right, so a lot of information. We know that um, hopefully a little bit of time to discuss. And again, we don't um, not looking for any action items. And I know we can't do that, but just looking for some general thoughts from the the commissioner or the council on some of these options. Um, and then staff will take that feedback and then again, prepare a resolution uh, for for council consideration. So again, open any questions or comments the the council might have.
Thank you, Wade. Um, I think I'll I'll kick this off. Pardon? Oh, I just some some back feed. Uh, I know when this came to council a year ago, year and a half ago, and um, you know, and and I want to be specific, Alder Aratafroda, you approached me on support. And and I and as I expressed to you at the time, I had certain reservations about phase two because of dollars. Yeah, but phase one, uh, I was given the assurance that this could happen at a million dollars. And some of these numbers are just staggering. Um, I think it's a great plan, no question about it. I mean, it is it is wonderful and beautiful and and I think that's something we can work towards. I just do do not believe that we can uh, uh, kick this off as is. Uh, so I'm going to seriously look at this project and probably opt for a much lesser uh, dollar amount to get started. But some of the specific questions that I I do have about the project, I was disappointed that there wasn't more green space. I see a lot of buildings, a lot of hard space, parking lots. Um, and I'm confused about the purpose of the 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 shelter itself, not not the basketball, the or the ice rink, but the the main shelter building versus what's going to be planned for phase two. I'm I'm confused about the difference between the two. And then the pump track, and that's probably directed at Ann. Um, it what's different about this pump track versus the one that's just up the street at Leopold? And I guess those are some of my questions to to kick it off.
Yeah, I mean, I guess to the first point, I mean, I I, as we mentioned earlier, I I think the park building in my staff's head is kind of a new model for for certain community parks. I mean, I think the idea is if you look at the the gist of the the building, it's really not that much different than McKee or Hugo Jamestown. I mean, it's it's bigger. It's got an office space, but other than that, it's it's fairly similar to those those shelters. Um, you know, I would also kind of point out just the the amount of residents we're serving in this neighborhood. Um, you know, having two community rooms, um, you know, I think we've got out of offhand the the numbers of population as it compares to you know, McKee Farms or Hugo Jamestown, but there's a lot more people in this neighborhood. So we felt this new park shelter model made a lot of sense um, in this in this area. To the point about, you know, phase two, um, I guess we wanted to create a scenario where if phase two doesn't happen, and we realize right now it's on the books. But we wanted to create a scenario where if phase two doesn't happen, um, our residents would still have a place to gather and have a community room. Um, and and again, I think the idea here is that the building is currently designed, um, would necessitate a a smaller footprint phase two, um, if if phase two does come come to fruition. Um, so that that's kind of the the rationale behind the park building. Scott, I don't know if you have anything to add on on that?
So and 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 again, I I, as Wade indicated, uh, uh, then the maybe a little bit more of an expanded model of a a community, a community park uh, a building. So I I guess that's all I would would really add.
And do you mind chiming in if you're still there on the um, the pump track?
Yes, I am. Um, I appreciate the question. Um, the easiest way to really answer that is that the the pump track bike park in general is really kind of more, I think, like, think like a ski hill. Okay, so the incentive for having a having two bike parks that are in close proximity is really they don't really affect or detract from each other, from each of the say of the sites. Um, the insight, the excitement there is, you know, that this has different features and characteristics that the that Eldo Leopold isn't going to have. They're close by, and that could almost incite the kid to, you know, go and try out Leopold and then, you know, wander over to this one, try this one for a little while and back and forth. It really creates less of a, you know, they're not there is no such thing as competition here. And I'm speaking as a cyclist, I can say for sure that, you know, I don't I don't ride one bike path and say, oh, I've done that. I'm not going to do that anymore. I ride it. I, you know, there are things that are always going to be coming forward. And what we know about kids is that there is this idea that, you know, there's a challenge in front of them. And they try it and they try it again, and they practice it and they try to get better at it. So these individual features are what's going to really win the, you know, it's going to have its own special and unique um, draw to the to the park itself.
Andy?
All right, uh, I guess I I will turn it over to Dave. Alder Herbst has a question. Thank you for answering my questions, by the way, so.
Um, Scott, what do we what do we have in? What is the balance in the Parkland dedication fee?
What what is that balance right now for the city of Pittsburgh?
I would, I would, I would defer to to Misty, um, but certainly with the Wade indicated, uh, one. Uh, what were the two developments that are going to be? Certainly, the North Traceway development by Mr. Gavers is going to be an additional uh, fee in lieu of Parkland dedication, along with the Achala uh, development, which is going to be, if I recall my my uh, my comment is around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fee in lieu of of Parkland dedication. Uh, we did, uh, our due receive about six hundred and fifty uh, from the juice plant, which is east of east of Fish Achery. Um, so there are, there are, you know, sufficient uh, dollars in there. And you know, I if I might, I you know, remind the council that they did allocate uh, of, you know, did allocate five million dollars uh, in uh, reallocation of of borrowing for the the south side. So you know, I think it at the end of the day, if if the council does decide to to, you know, build the whole thing, there are uh, there are dollars between the south side and the north side as as we currently have budgeted. And if it does come to fruition that the south side doesn't happen, uh, we will be under budget, if you would. It's just kind of an idea that the 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 five million that was budgeted for on the south side, we're kind of moving that to the north side, if you would, uh, with the, you know, understanding that maybe the south side wouldn't happen, so.
Thank you, Scott. So, you know, I I wasn't on council when this first came through. I was told, you know, funding source was found, it was park dedication. Um, I understand that. I understand it's cost higher. Um, would throw out one thing, you know, about the skating rink. Um, if you if you would recess the recess the area in, you know, the basketball court area, two to three inches and install a drain in there, then you could have a skating rink for little to no money. You know, you got cold enough, you'd freeze it. And it got warm, you know, wouldn't take that much water. I I think you could do that for a very minimal amount of money. You know, if you get three inches of ice, they can be they can be skating. Um, again, I'm just going to give my general throwing my two cents, you know, the five million you're mentioning, Scott, under, but well, that was going to be borrowed. Uh, and that was not, you know, not for sure. The council, I would say I am I would, I'd be willing to spend more money on this if it means that, you know, the the um, phase two on the south side, just as a pocket park or is is very very little, you know, how much I'm I'm going to save to to put into this. I I'm, I guess I don't know at this point, but that would be a compromise I'd be willing to willing to make. Thank you.
Um, Alder Maldonado, you have your hand raised? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, so a few questions for.
So a few questions for Wade or maybe for other folks as well. One, just kind of considering once a space is up and running, has there, have there been considerations of ways to generate funds, either through, you know, maybe an organization having a permanent space in the building or, uh, you know, some, some other mechanism? The second question I had is regarding fundraising. I know we have, you know, representative obviously from Saris, but has there been other interest from, you know, sort of corporate sponsors for, um, you know, being able to support this project? I'll just leave it at those two questions for now.
Yeah, to the first one, I can kick it off and Scott, feel free to chime in. You know, I don't think that this space is set up for, for leasable space on, on the north side. Um, I certainly think, you know, there'd be revenue generation through, um, you know, reservations, just like at our other shelters. And I would envision this, this spot would be heavily used in terms of reservations. I mean, I don't know what kind of revenues we're talking about, but, um, that, that's a, a source. Scott, do you have anything to add on that?
You know, there may be another small, if, if we do get into renting of, of skates or, or, or those kinds of things, it'd be minimal in regards to revenue. But in theory, if, if, if we do go to a, a concession vendor or, or that type of, uh, that type of service that, you know, that in theory could be a contractual service that the service is provided. But we do, you know, receive, receive some, some revenues from, from that use of the facility.
And then to your other question, um, you know, in terms of fund, corporate fundraising, I've, I've never done that in, in a city capacity and certainly if there is, you know, interest from the council in exploring that, I'd, I'd be willing to do that. Don't maybe have that skill set, but certainly again, would be open to discussions with any, anyone that's interested in, in discussing that, so, yep.
Additional questions? Okay, Alder, Alder Gerhart.
Thank you.
And then Alder Allen.
A couple of questions. This skate park and I do not bike or skateboard or scooter, so please excuse me for not being able to ask the right question, but it occurs to me that I'm not sure it's really usable for people that aren't bikers. And the reason I ask is because a young person approached me last year that lives in my district that really wants a skate park for skateboarders. Uh, he came to the Parks and Open Space Plan, uh, you know, public testimony to talk about that. So anyway, I, I guess it's not so much of a question as, you know, I, I, I'm not convinced that that's really that usable for skateboarders and it would be interesting when the design, as the design moves forward for that, to maybe bring in some kids from the community that might use it and use it for different wheels, you know, besides bikes and see if they have some input and maybe so adding some options that would work for skateboarders.
Brad, did you want to comment on that at all or?
Sure, I can touch on that. It's a good comment and something that I can address is that, you know, we looked at a couple of options in the, the, the area in gray, which is not a small area. It's kind of a, it's described by IMBA as kind of a linear skate park component. So that would be an opportunity for those all wheel, wheels components. But then when you see the color change in the path systems, um, that becomes more of a dedicated bike. But also it could accommodate some of the single wheel things. I don't know what they're called, apologize. Or some larger, some scooters with larger wheels, that chip seal surface would accommodate that. So it's, it's not solely for bicycles. We wanted to make sure that we created a, a feature in a, in a destination that accommodated many different user types.
Okay. Well, I'd love to bring that young person in maybe to have a conversation if that's possible, because he was very passionate about it and I, you know, I love the fact that he would be the perfect, he would be the user. So if Wade or Scott, if I could arrange that in some way, I would love that opportunity.
And actually Gabriella, I did, I did reach out to him.
Oh, good.
And, and he was very excited about this idea and felt that it would be a, a good idea. So he's, he's on board.
Okay, awesome. I'll touch base with him too. Second question, if you don't mind if I, um, the, so we're going to talk about spending plan amendments and I added an amendment there for additional funding to make a solar shelter, which is actually a, a park shelter that's made out of solar panels. I don't know if the council will accept that, I certainly hope they do, and I don't know if that's going to be prioritized, but I just wanted to throw it out there that instead of doing the covered, like the, just the standard cement cover like you're showing on the screen there, maybe consider doing a solar shelter and then you can generate the power with that solar shelter rather than putting additional solar panels on the roof or maybe even that would replace both geothermal and solar. Maybe an opportunity there for cost savings or duplicating energy needs. And I'll let that run.
All right, we'll move on to the next, Alder Allen, you, you have your hand raised? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a number of comments. First of all, I want to start organizing the Get Gabriella on a skateboard fundraising campaign to help fund this. I think we could probably get a lot of sponsors for that. But anyhow, in, in 1998, the city spent $6 million building the city hall that some of you are sitting in right now. That would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $20 million today. In 2008, the city spent $10 million building a library, which would probably be somewhere in the area of $15 million today. Uh, and we just spent $7 million on one fire station and $6 million on another. Given the fact that this particular structure is going to provide very direct services to residents of one of our most populated neighborhoods, I think $5 million is a bargain. So to, to, and, and you know, the notion that we, that we can't build it unless we get a certain number of donations just doesn't make sense to me. This is a city service that we should be providing and we, this is something that's been needed for at least two decades, probably three, and it's time to get moving on a project like this. Now, the, the other question that I want to talk about is, I, I, I fully support the idea of doing geothermal and other projects like that in, in associa, in association with this. But because this is right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, what I would like to see happen is that we, we work to make sure that we're not disrupting the neighborhood with the sound from these pieces of mechanical equipment. So as you, as, as more specific planning starts happening, I think we should take a look at the sound requirements that have been imposed on the Pittsburgh Technology Campus. There's a, there's a long list of requirements over there for businesses that are locating there so they don't disrupt the residential neighborhood in Corey Hill. And I think that that type of sound, uh, those type of sound requirements would be beneficial for this residential neighborhood as well.
Okay, anything else?
Those were.
Thank you, thank you, Alder Allen. Alder Aratafra, you have your hand raised? Go ahead, get off the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Wade, Scott and the team for the presentation. Uh, this is my third time. With the presentation and tomorrow is going to be my fourth, we see that, but I also want to mention that the Parks Committee, we have a great discussion in Parks Committee and also in the Healthy Neighborhood Committee, so I don't know, Wade, you can add those comments. But the other thing I want to mention is, you know, that I am very supportive of this, uh, uh, project. This area is represent my, my part of my district right now. And also we need to remember who are the people who live here and how many parks and recreational spaces do they have right now? So 11% of our population live in this area. We have two new project in the pipeline with, I don't know, in total with around 300 units between the two. More people coming to the area. And I think we need to provide services, recreational spaces and services to, especially to, because we are getting new development coming. And also because the, the people that live in that area right now, they don't have any park that says City of Pittsburgh. The closer one is, uh, is a Madison Park. And the playground, the closer playground is in the Leopold School Playground. That, you know, that kids during the school year only can play after hours or during weekends. If the school is not using those. This is going to be a park that the city, I don't know, the city hasn't invest a lot of money or resource in that area in recreational activity or other services in that area. I think we need to, we need to consider, uh, take that, this in mind when we decide what we want to see in that part of the core. We are, we are spending, we spend a lot of millions of dollar in the road to bring development. This is, you know, this is going to accommodate some of the recreational activity for the future development coming here. So I think that, I know that two years ago, when we put together this idea, the costs of contraction were totally different compared to today's and maybe who knows in six more months. I think when I put my amendment to the CIP, the funding source for this project will be, um, you know, park dedication land and also debt. That one was, I, you know, I didn't hide that because I knew at the moment that park dedication land will, will not be enough to cover all of this. But I, I know that, you know, I, I would love to have the, you know, the, the, you know, if we can do it with all the amenity. Also the, you know, the building, uh, when it was designed, the, the preliminary talk of the initial design, uh, we did an ambition of, uh, uh, the size of this building. But also if the building in phase two will never happen, at least we have a nice shelter in this, in the north part. So I am aware of that. That yes, maybe the size of the building is a little, slightly bigger than it was originally thought. But now if we are reconsidering, say, you know, who knows when phase two can be built, at least we are providing with some shelter and structure in phase one. So I think, I think this is really, is great for the, for our community. We are building healthier community in this part of the city. And this is one of the elements that is going to bring the healthy component to, to this part of the city where most of the people, I would say, not most, all of the people live in multifamily buildings. They don't have a yard. They don't have a park that they can go out and play. So I, I will, I will ask my fellow Alder that reconsider this. This is an investment, this is not an expense. This is an investment in our community, in the health of our community, the resident that live in that area. So I will recommend you that please support this project.
Thank you, Alder Aratafra. I, I echo a number of your, your points. I mean, I think the area does, definitely needs a, a park, a recreation area. There is nothing at this point. I brought up the point earlier, though, my concern is, it's not just the dollars. I mean, I think we can work through the dollars. It's just that when I look at the map, and that's what I'm doing now, the plat, I just see a lot of hard space. I don't see a lot of green space. And when I think of a park, I, I think of green. We have a building, we have a shelter, and I'm assuming the shelter is going to be used for multi purposes other than just basketball. And of course you would like the ice rink. We have a play area off and then we have the, off to the, to the east. And then we have the pump, uh, track. But it doesn't leave a lot of room for, for other activities that, that I associate with, like at McKee Farms, but overall, it, it is a great plan and we'll just, we'll, we'll get there, I guess. But I just wanted to add those. Yeah, one moment, let me finish. So those, those are my, my comments and I need to think hard and long on where I'm going to support this project. So go ahead, Alder Aratafra.
Yeah, the other thing that you need to consider that this is more, this park is more like an urban park instead of like a, um, residential park, you know? So that one is because this is the, the, the area where it's considered our urban area of the city. So this park has those, the characteristic, characteristic of an urban park. So I don't know, Wade, do you want to add more about that?
Yeah, I was going to add on to that. Yeah, I think, uh, Alder Udell, the intent was to create an active space. You know, I've been around park planning for years and I just hate driving by acres and acres of green open space that nobody's using. So the, the, it was an intentional planning effort to fill this space up with, with uses. You're right, it doesn't have the traditional, you know, big yard, yard spaces, but that, that was intentional. We tried to fill this site up with as much as we could. Again, on the south side, you know, I think there's some opportunities for more passive, traditional green space. But yeah, that was, I guess, an intentional planning approach. And that being said, you know, I still think we do have areas for, um, maybe not, you know, we have a playground, we've got some, some various stormwater green areas. So I think we, we try to strike that balance overall.
Alder Wheeler, you have your hand raised? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna, you know, mention the two pump tracks, but actually there's a pretty good video on the internet, Madison.com, that shows the Leopold one. And there is a distinct difference. And with that one, you have adults doing the tricks like BMX where they're like turning their bikes around. And I'm kind of surprised that no kids have gotten hurt on this because they have little kids that intertwine in this stuff. So at first I was just, you know, oh geez, we could just deal with one, but I, I don't know. That, um, the one at Leopold seems more like for adults and, you know, a higher level of people who can ride the bikes. Well, with that being said, um, one of the things I always get concerned about are the operating costs. And I see the $70,000 for staff, but when you're talking ice rinks and maintenance and, you know, custodians, it just seems like it's going to be a little bit more than $70,000 as far as operating cost. And I, I just think we need to be upfront, you know, with the community, with the true cost. So if there's more, we need to let them know, but is, I guess what I'm asking, do you think it's going to be more than $70,000?
Yeah, and I'll defer to Scott, but just kicking it off. So these options do include utilities. You know, basically, you know, basically custodial staff, all that stuff. I mean, they are estimates, but, you know, Scott, I guess maybe I'll turn it over to you, um, to kind of elaborate on that.
No, that's a, that's a great, a great question, Alder Wheeler. And I, I did, uh, the annual, you know, uh, maintenance costs and utility costs are, are generally a little bit less than that 30 to 35,000. And the, the 65 to 70, I, I, we didn't take into consideration the, you know, the, the mechanical of the, of the, uh, of the skating rink and, and those kinds of things. But, you know, I did go through and, and actually determine the hours of operation and when it was going to be open with, with, uh, with, uh, rates of, of pay and things like that. So that is, you know, that's pretty close. But I, I certainly agree that, you know, we don't want to, you know, underestimate the, what the annual cost of the, of the facility is going to be. But I think, I think it is, you know, at the end of the day, it, it, you know, it certainly is significant dollars, but, you know, as, as some of the others have mentioned, an investment in the community and, and those kinds of things. So we, we can certainly flush those out a little bit closer when we, when we end up with the final design and, 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 and those types of things.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, do you have any other questions, Alder? Okay. Mayor Richardson, you, you have your hand raised? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, you know, looking at this, what, one of the big decisions I think is, you know, this, looking at this, it's almost like we're trying to build two community centers. And so really the question to me is, do you just build the community center in phase one? Or do you build it in phase two instead of building two community centers? I think it's just one or the other. And it might make sense to do it in phase one. I mean, I think there's a lot of reasons to do it in phase one. But I think that's one big question for me. But then, you know, I did just a little bit of research. And when you talk about community centers, that opens a whole can of worms then, because, you know, I talked to Mayor Satya in Madison about their community. Satya in Madison about their community centers, and, you know, she said that they have five in Madison, and nonprofits run four of them, and she wishes nonprofits ran all five. And so I think that if we are going to do the community center in phase one, that's a big issue that needs to be decided as well, because from what I'm hearing, nonprofits generally run those, and it's a lot better, and that's what cities want. And I think part of that is, you know, some of the just, uh, costs, because I agree with Jim, I, I think the operating costs and outgoing costs are grossly underrepresented because, you know, Michael Johnson said, with the community center, you can easily get up to a half a million dollars a year in operating costs, and you could probably do a little less than that, but it, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars out of nonprofit with help from the city. You know, the city can mow the lawn and plow the, you know, uh, driveways and stuff like that. I mean, there's things that we can do to help out with that, of course, and we can help get it built. I don't think it's, you know, necessarily the building that we shouldn't help with. We, we certainly can and should. Um, but I, I just look at something like the roof over basketball courts and the ice rink and think that's a million and a half dollars, it just isn't necessary. It just seems excessive, but I do think that, you know, there's a lot of great things here. So I think to me, it comes down to, you kinda alluded to it, I think, in the discussion is, in the presentation is, are we really gonna just do the community center as part of phase one or not? And then there's some other decisions that have to be made as part of that, but I think it might make sense to do that. That's just something that we need to decide as a whole.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I see two hands raised. Let, I'll let both of you speak, and then I think we're gonna cut it off, only because we have a couple hours yet to, left to this evening, if there are no, no objections.
We'll, we'll go alphabetically, Jane.
All right. Randy, to your, uh, point, I think there's, there are different types of park and recreational spaces. They don't all necessarily consist of, of grass and trees. And, um, in the city of Madison, just off of State Street, there's Elizabeth Link Peace Park that basically is all concrete. Um, it's multi-levels of concrete, it's, it, it's kind of in a bit of an amphitheater design, so there are different types of events that happen there and diff, different ways that people can gather. But these gathering places can come in a lot of different forms, and in an urban setting, you know, especially in that particular neighborhood, in the Fishatory Road corridor, which we were talking about last night, the value of the land is increasing at an astounding rate, and so it's difficult for the city to just, you know, McKee Farms Park is hundreds of acres, and that, or not hundreds of acres, but it's, it's close to 100 acres. And that was, that was dedicated to the city, um, as a, as parkland during a big residential development, but that area is, is not densely populated like this particular neighborhood is. So I think, um, in, in an urban setting, park design is gonna be different, recreational spaces are gonna be different than it is in a, in a, a place where you might be doing a lot of soccer games or softball games. I mean, you wouldn't really be able to do that in this neighborhood because, just because of the amount of land required, but you can do other things that would put, that would create more value for the residents of that neighborhood than having a big soccer field.
Thank you, and I am familiar with the Peace Park. It's just that we, as a city, we seem to, seem to strive to sustainability and grass and trees and, and, and trees and trees and grass. So that's why I am expressing green space. So you'll excuse me that this new concept has come to forward to the city of Fitchburg of, of an urban park. And, and, and I said to you earlier that I, I really do like the, the idea, I just, how do we get there? We need some thoughtful, uh, thought here, and, um, and, and we'll move in that direction. Alder Maldonado, you're up, you're on the floor.
Yeah, I guess to that point, I don't think grass would necessarily be more environmentally friendly than, than concrete, because you have to maintain and, you know, treat and, you know, take care of grass. But, um, I, I guess my last question, Wade, I know there's been extensive community engagement, uh, you know, in the early phases of this project. With this latest version, you know, apart from sort of the HNI committee and, um, maybe the young person that, that, uh, you know, spoke up with Gabriella, are, are there any other potential plans to just kinda run a last, you know, phase of this by, you know, even if it's not a huge group, a, a significant group of people in the community just to get their temperature on it?
Yeah, so we did have a kind of a stakeholder work group, uh, that kinda helped us get to this point, that they met, um, it was last year, I kinda forget the dates, but yeah, it was a broad spectrum of neighborhood stakeholders that was part of that group. And then, yeah, we were planning an open house, um, you know, I think maybe in January, but COVID kinda shut that down. So I think the thought now is, once we get direction on a, on a final, final design from council, then we'll, we'll go to the neighborhood, just almost like a kickoff, you know? This is what's coming, just so folks are aware of it. Yeah, we definitely envision, you know, getting back out there at least, um, at least once, if not, you know, if not more, so.
Okay. If, if, if that's the case, I would love to, you know, be involved.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. There are more to come. Uh, we are well, an hour past, uh, our original time slot, so I'd like to move on to the other ha, half of the meeting this evening, uh, which is, let me find it back to my agenda, which is the, uh, item 6B on the agenda, the ARP A, um, TID number six, Closure Investment Plan, Council Amendment Discussion. And, um, our finance director, Misty Dodge, will speak to it, and then we'll, we'll move to the amendments. Misty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Randy. So first, wanted to talk about just where to find the investment plan that we're gonna talk about. Um, so on the city's website, if you go over here to Government and then Finance, and then go to the Financial Records and Reports, the ARPA TID Closure Investment Plan is all right here, kind of that second block. So the schedule is out there, if people are curious where we're at in this process. Uh, the committee of the whole presentation, which talked a lot about the background on why we're going through this process and kinda some context about the decisions that need to be made. The mayor's proposed investment plan is out there, and then the council amendments that were proposed are out there. And tonight, we're gonna talk about those council amendments. Um, so that's here. Uh, there were 24 of them. Uh, easiest way to navigate this document is to use the bookmarks over here, and there's a summary available, and then each one of the amendments are bookmarked. Um, so there are 24 of them on the, on the list. Uh, tonight's goal is just to talk about all of them, we're not gonna actually vote on them. That will happen in a couple of council meetings from now. Uh, but one of the big things I want to remind you is that this investment plan is not a budget, right? This is just narrowing the scope of the things that you wanna have further conversation about, uh, whether or not they should be funded through this unique funding source. Um, so it doesn't have to meet a certain dollar amount. Um, and then this is not a final appropriation either. So once this is established, you will then direct staff to further explore the logistics and, you know, what it would take to actually implement these items. And you'll see them again either through a 2022 budget amendment, the upcoming CIP process, and/or upcoming budget processes. So this is just a very first step in a big process, and it, just keeping it at that kinda 30,000-foot view. Um, so that's kind of the logistics I had, and then your department heads are all here. If there's questions that you want to ask of us, but ultimately, the purpose of tonight is for council to discuss and ask questions.
Very good. So we may move to the amendments, Misty?
Yep.
Very good.
Number one.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, the first amendment up, uh, number one is add new voting machines and election equipment. Uh, and the sponsor is Alder Gerhart. Would you like to speak to your?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll keep it quick. Um, I think we've discussed in the past about adding polling locations, uh, and I know the, the big barrier is the upfront cost, the actual physical voting machines and electric equipment that are required. Obviously, there is a ongoing budget cost of staff, but I think that's more minimal compared to the logistical, you know, uh, actual machines. So, um, I think that this is a good time to do this, given the fact that, I mean, very urgently, we have a November election, state, uh, governor race, all the statewide races, plus all of the, uh, the, the federal senate race. Um, and we're adding the town of Madison, and that part of it is so far away from their polling place, that I think having a polling location there would be very important, in my personal opinion. And then I think having another, uh, polling place on the other side of Verona Road in District One is potentially an important thing. So I think this is a good use of the money, and I hope that the council will support it.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Yes, Mayor Richardson?
I think it's maybe just for Tracy, sorry, I put you on the spot, but I think that the bigger concern with multiple additional polling places is staffing it, isn't it? I think that's really just finding enough people to work it all day long, if I remember right. Do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, that's correct. If you can remember back to 2020, when the pandemic first hit, that April election, we didn't have enough people to staff the four locations, we had to call in the National Guard to assist with that. Um, what's really hard for us are, are the February and April elections. Uh, what I call, obviously, is our snowbirds, our retired community, that actually are the ones that, the majority of the ones that work our polling locations, and they tend to travel a lot in those months. So those are the hardest elections to schedule, um, even with four. Uh, and it was, it was decided that, you know, when we annexed the town of Madison, that we'd like to have a fifth location to accommodate them. Um, so we did have, uh, money in the CIP for equipment for a fifth location. Um, and we are working at recruiting people for that fifth location, the sixth location, you know? We, we can, we can find the staff to do that, but, you know, it'd be, it'd be a big reach out to the community, and then, and I need help with that as well.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Alder Gerhart?
I would be delighted to help in that effort, and I do think that we can gin up some more people. I personally think that there are a lot of people out there that don't necessarily apply because they don't think that there, there's need for it. Uh, I've always been interested in being a poll worker, but I've never, um, I would be happy to step up personally, but I also think there's a lot of people out there. So I understand that that's a concern, but I would be delighted to help with that effort.
Very good. Any additional questions, discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to amendment number two. Add senior center outdoor patio. Uh, Alder Herbst, you are the sponsor, you have the floor.
Okay. So, uh, Community Center Director Jill, um, in discussions with many of the, uh, many of the people that come to the, um, community center, um, have expressed desire to have an outdoor area, especially, you know, now with, uh, still, you know, the fear of the Omicron, people would be more comfortable being outside, and we, we feel it would be a very big enhancement to the community center. Uh, they were previously planning to do this, you know, we were, we were going to, uh, um, use other funds, so we, we felt this would be a good use of the ARPA funds to preserve our, preserve our other money for, for things. This also, um, let's say it's 39,000. We have requirements, you know, we thought, you know, couldn't we just lay down a concrete pad and, and, uh, but Promega has requirements, as the mayor probably and administrator know that, and so they have to be involved with the design, so it's a little more expensive than we, we thought, but, uh, I think if you would pull the people that come and use the community center, uh, especially the seniors, they would, they would love to, love to have this for the, you know, six, six to eight months a year when, when it would be available.
Thank you. Uh, questions? Discussion? Seeing none. We will move on to the next amendment, which is amendment number three. Remove bike lanes on remainder of Wayland Road. And, uh, Alder Aratafrata, you are the sponsor, would you like to speak to this amendment?
Yeah, so I want to make a clarification. If you see all my, um, my amendment for city infrastructure, they have the same justification because I thought when I did it, I put all of them in one, so Misty split all of them. So, so, so you know, this is what, some of them, they have the same, uh, justification text. Regarding the, um, the, the bike lanes or the shoulder, to pay the shoulder for the bike lanes in Wayland Road, um, it's something that I opposed the first time when we did that, um, and I would oppose to fund this type of thing because, uh, this is a rural road. Uh, we have plenty of bike paths for the bikers to use, and people usually biking this Wayland Road, um, uh, areas are, you know, bikers that, um, you know, they're, they're, you know, I think they're, they chose to, to, to buy this, uh, at their own risk, so, um, I prefer to invest that money in other priorities that the city has. So, so, so people, they know my initial thought about this a couple of years ago, this is, um, I would, I would prefer to invest this fund, uh, in other areas where we have bigger priorities and bigger problems. So, um, that's it.
Thank you. We'll open it up for discussion. Yes, Alder Herbst, go ahead.
I, I'm gonna add the former Alder and, uh, um, active bicycle person, Tony Hartman, came before this board, and, and his impassioned plea to get buffered bicycle lanes on Lacy and Sine Road cited the example that he was almost hit by a truck on Wayland Road on the uphill section. Um, I, I understand where you're coming from, Julia, but the, the same people riding the trails are these active bicyclists, and that is a, that is a dangerous section going up the hill, um, you know, towards, uh, Fitch Verona Road there, there's no shoulder, the sightlines, uh, that, that would be a, a safety enhancement I would, I would like to keep, keep in there. I've, I've been close to being hit there myself. Uh, it's just, um, it, it's not very comfortable, and a lot of people, in the summer, it's a steady stream of bicyclists on that road, you know, the majority, many, many of them from Fitchburg, so, thank you.
Uh, yes, Alder Aratafrata, go ahead. Put you on mute.
Okay, so Dave, I understand your position, and, you know, my recommendation, if you really care about this, maybe you should bring a CIP amendment, you know, but I don't think that we should be using this fund for that. You know, maybe we can discuss in the CIP plan during time, um, or in the CIP, but, um, I don't think that the use of the ARPA funds, um, there are good use of the ARPA funds, this project, that's it.
Yes, Mayor Richardson, go ahead.
Yeah, I talked about this when, uh, we went through the plan the first time, and part of the reason for having this in here is if some other programs come out that provide funds, or at least matching funds for a project like this, it's certainly not a priority among, uh, pretty much everything else on here, but I think taking it out is short-sighted because there, we don't know what other opportunities are gonna come forward. So to me, I think it makes a lot of sense to keep it in here, there's no reason that it hurts anything to keep it in here, and it really enables us, if some other programs come forward, that, you know, maybe fit this very well, that we can get some funding maybe from other programs as well. So to me, I think it makes a lot of sense to keep it in here, I don't know why you would remove it, especially when it's part of the Ironman biking route, which is a huge asset to the city as well, and so making that stretch of lane, road as safe as possible is great. I wish that we could convince the town of Verona to fix their part of Wayland Road, that'd be even better, but I think, you know, it's just the impact that Ironman has in the city as well, I think it makes sense to at least have it on our radar, even though it's not a priority.
Yes, Alder Aratafrata, you have your hand raised? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I agree with you, Mayor, about I, the, you know, the benefits of having the shoulder pay, because we talk about the Ironman, and, you know, I don't know how much money the Ironman, um, you know, is, the city is directly impacted by that, but I would like to see those numbers. But the other thing is, like, we just discussed the, the, the hub phase one, and we need funds for that project, so I hope you understand from where you're coming, because for, you know, for me, it's more important to put money to fund those, that type of project that, you know, to, to dedicate ARPA fund for, for this project, so.
Did you want? Okay. Additional questions, discussion? Hearing none, we will move on to the next amendment, which is amendment number four. Add kids crossing replacement at McKee Farms Park. And then Alder Aratafrata, you are the sponsor, you wanna speak to your amendment?
Yes, so, so, um, so as you know, a kid crossing, uh, McKee Farm Park Yes, so, so, so as you know, a kid crossing at McKee Farm Park need to be replaced. And we had it for the CIP in 2026. It's going to cost around $750,000 to replace. I don't know, this is what we put way back a couple of years ago. Maybe it's going to cost more than that, for sure. And, and so, and, and I think one of the, if we re, if we, you know, ARPA, one of the, the, in the ruling, in the final ruling, they talk about how to invest, you know, in, in, in healthy community and recreational, in park infrastructure. So, so this is how I, one of my recommendations, if we can set up a couple of hundred thousand dollars for this project, that is going to come to the city in a couple of years. So like a matching pro, funding, so. As you know, this park is very well-used, very popular. And I think this is a good use of the money.
Thank you. Discussion, yes. Alder Herbst.
Just one comment, Julia. You know, I was, I was a volunteer when we built, built that. And they, we had a very successful program where people volunteered and we had, we had leaders, you know, that knew construction. And we built that at a very, I think, a reduced cost by having all the volunteer labor. And I would like to encourage us to try to do that, replicate that again on the rebuild to lower our, to lower our costs. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, you know, how it was, how it was built. And I think we should resurrect that, and I, you know, I believe we can reduce the cost of doing this some. How much, I don't know, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Additional? No hands raised. Hearing none, moving on. To the Amendment Number 5. Increase inclusive playground funding for access and, and concrete. Alder Aratafrada, you are the sponsor. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, thank you. So this one is another, another mini park that we have been working since 2018. And I think it's time to finish. The idea when we implemented that was to, to raise 50% of the cost of the park. I think we have done a good job to, to, to obtain almost adding 90,000, 1,000 for this park. But I think we are going to come out short. Maybe Scott, I don't know if Scott is still on, on the screen, I cannot see him. But we are going to come short, and we need to do all the concrete around the park. And, and this is why I, for me is, you know, 2022 should be the year that we finish this park after four or five years. So, and to use some of this ARPA fund to, to finish, so. So that's it. I don't know if Scott is there, so.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a bit of an update on that, Julia, and Misty, you can help me with this. Is we do, there is a resolution that's currently drafted, and I believe is, is going to be referred out soon here. We did get some bids for the, for the, the path work along with this concrete apron. And as Julia mentioned, we, we're a little bit short of funds, so we are going to be coming to the, the council for additional, additional dollars to get that, to get that taken care of.
May I ask, I'm going to ask a question. Scott, so are you saying that the resolution's going to care for the dollars that are needed to finish the project?
Well, there's, there's going to be two pieces to it. There's going to be a $50,000 request for the, for the, the concrete work and the access path between the, the inclusive playground and the splash pad, along with another path to the south. And then a $75,000 option to, to finish with, with fencing of the, of the facility.
So then, in other words, it would take care of, of the project itself? Very good. Any other additional questions? Hearing none, we will move on to the next amendment. Amendment Number 6. Increase inclusive playground funding for benches. And Alder Aratafrada, you are the sponsor. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yeah, so, so this one is also asking the council to, to support the purchase of, you know, some of the benches around the park, furnishing, or some table, big knee table, or, or some shade. We don't know yet, but at least for, for the benches, you know, some seating arrangement.
Questions from the committee, from council? Hey, seeing none, we will move on to the next amendment. Amendment Number 7. Add tower hill shelter replacement. Again, Alder Aratafrada, you have the floor.
Yes, so as you know, some of this park, some of this city, infrastructure are park-related. We, this is also we discuss in the park committee. So, so regarding the tower hill shelter, this shelter has been under, in the CIP, I don't know for how many years, you know. And now it's pushing forward, you know. There's no money, we push, we push, and it's in very bad condition. It's in District 2. It's very well-used. Every Saturday and Sunday it's used during summertime. The condition of the rest are very bad. And I think that, you know, I think it was originally in the CIP for 250,000. I don't remember Misty, maybe this was a, 250 from 10 years ago. But at least this is how we can make this, how we can fix this shelter, you know, a better place, a better shelter. And then it's originally now in the CIP for 2027. So it's already five years ahead, and I would like to see if we can fix this shelter, you know, before 2027.
Questions? Discussion from council? Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to Amendment Number 8. Add water fountain at Belmar Park. Again, Alder Aratafrada, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Which one is? Oh, okay.
Number 8.
So, yes, I, someone, I receive a couple of calls and people from that area, and people that talk to, to parks about that adding of the water fountain at Belmar Park. I don't know how much it's going to go, but $4,000 because that one it cost, I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, but, you know. I, this, the Belmar Park water fountain was in the CIP a couple of years ago and was removed in 2019 from the CIP. So, and I asked Joe, because I, I, I don't know, I don't know if there is a water, if there is a need. I don't know, Joe, you can speak about, but he recommended that it would be a good idea to add this to the park.
Nothing to add, other than there currently isn't a water fountain in that park.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to Amendment Number 9. Add Bart, excuse me, add bike parking stalls to major city parks. And Alder Maldonado, you are the sponsor. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Sure. This was at the request of the Chair of the Bicycle Committee, Mark Hamilton. So there was, you know, just a need based on, you know, the bike and pad plan for, you know, additional infrastructure for bike parking. I got the estimate for the cost per bike parking stall from Bike Fitchburg. And I'm including this recommendation in our CIP, or in our ARPA spending plan.
Very good. Are you stating then that we're short in our parks as far as bike parking stalls? Is it, I'm assuming?
Yeah, that was, that was the recommendation, that we could, you know, stand for more bike parking infrastructure.
Okay, very good. Additional discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to Amendment Number 10. Add tree replacement for Emerald Ash Bore EAB affected trees. And Alder Gerhart is the sponsor. Would you like to speak to your amendment, Alder?
Yes, thank you so much. So this is very much self-explanatory, but, and I know you've, I'm not going to belabor the point because I know you've heard me talk about this a million times. But anyway, the reason why I think this is a good candidate for this money is because it's very difficult to find the money in the operating budget. As you all know, it's a tight budget to actually put towards this mitigation. And it is a very limited time, you know, these ash trees are going to die. We're going to replace them. It's a one-time thing that's going to go away. I think it's going to be almost impossible to continue finding the money in the operating budget. But if we invest with this one-time-use money, we will clear this issue, we will mitigate it, and we can move forward. And, you know, this can't be, my understanding is that this cannot be added to the CIP through debt financing. So really, the only way to get this done is through operating budget. And I think this is a good way to clear the, clear the issue.
I have a question. How many trees do you buy for 135,000? Do you have an idea?
About 450 is the, is the estimate of trees.
Alder Herbst, you, go ahead.
Gabrielle, where, where are the trees? Now, my, I believe the majority of these, the trees that have died are Emerald Ash Bore, including the one in my yard and almost everyone in my neighborhood are on private property.
These are all public trees, so these would not be replacing any sort of private property, all public trees.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, we will move on to Amendment Number 11. Add update complete tree inventory. Alder Gerhart, you are the sponsor. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So this came up in Tree Advisory. It's one of the things that's kind of been missing for a long time. We actually do, we have a partial tree inventory, but it is incomplete, and it also needs to be updated. And so it's difficult to manage the urban forest when you really don't know exactly the trees that are in the... We have, we don't have a full understanding of it. Also, you have to do a lot of piecemeal tree inventories, hire consultants to do that with projects. So we would need to hire a consultant because our forester doesn't have enough time to do it. But again, this is sort of a one-time cost, and then that it can be updated as we go forward. One other note here is that, you know, we've been a Tree City USA since 1998. There is a Tree City of the World designation. And the two elements that we are missing is number one, a tree protection ordinance, which I know you've heard me talk about a million times because we're working on a Tree Advisory, and number two, a tree, accurate tree inventory. And we would be the only second city in the state of Wisconsin to achieve a Tree City of the World if we were able to get this done. So another nice incentive to, to fund this.
Thank you. Discussion? Alder Herbst.
Want to be more cost-effective, we could probably hire a couple of summer interns and get this completed in one summer. You know, anyone that's been in Boy Scouts identifies trees. They could have a book that it would tell which tree it was. And I would, I would think we could knock this out with a couple of interns over a, over a summer, or maybe a summer, two summers.
I mean, I, I think the cost might end up being pretty close because if you're talking about four interns, five interns over a couple of summers, that's, that's $50,000, $40,000, $50,000. Whereas I think, my understanding is that a consultant would be more rapid and do more accurate work and probably can get it done a lot quickly. I, I think that's certainly an option, but I, I personally think that finding the funding for extra tree interns would be a lot more difficult than just getting this done one time and, one and done. So that's my, my take on it.
Additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next amendment. Amendment Number 12. Add consultant to plan for park and rides. Alder Gerhart, you are the sponsor. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, thank you so much. So this came up in Transportation and Transit Committee multiple times. It also came up as part of that, that Wisconsin Department of Transportation I was mentioning at our yesterday's meeting. This long-term study they're doing to improve congestion around the Beltline regionally. That study actually identified three potential park and ride locations that were high priority in the city of Fitchburg, and I listed them here, Verona Road County PPD, number two, Fish Head Tree Road County PPD, and number three, US 14 McCoy Road, Lacey Road area. Those are all, you know, just general regions. But that's part of the long-term strategy for the region. I also think it's part of this, should be the part of the strategy for our city because we're going to keep expanding theoretically, right? We're doing these neighborhood plans, we're going to keep expanding the urban service area. And all of that is going to put more traffic onto our main arteries, of which there are limited, limited capacity. So I think that we need to start prioritizing, try to see how we can get single-use vehicles off the road. One good way, I think, to do that for people that are commuting just on a weekly basis is to have a park and ride available. People could park their cars, and then we, we run bus service to and from. I think it's an efficient way to use bus service because it's fewer lines, but you could potentially get a lot more people on there. And they can also be sites for, for carpeling as well, community carpeling. So I, and this would be to pay for a consultant to plan for it. I mean, I would love to add the park and rides to the CIP, but I don't know if we have any idea about exact locations, land acquisition. Like, in order to plan for that, I think it, it takes some, some upfront knowledge. And I think that maybe, maybe there's a situation where we might want to acquire land nearer term rather than farther down the line. It might be more cost-effective to do it sooner rather than later. I don't know. There's a lot of moving parts. So the idea behind this is to kind of get a head start on the planning for this. And I do imagine that there will be funding for it since Wisconsin Department of Transportation has identified three areas in the city of Fitchburg as high priorities. So I have to imagine that there's going to be, we should be ready to jump on this as soon as that money is, is ready to go.
Very good. Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to the next amendment, which is Amendment 13. Add startup funding for municipal tree nursery. Alder Gerhart, you are the sponsor. You have the floor.
Thank you. So this, I mentioned this very briefly at our, our last meeting, but this came up, something I, I was pondering in Tree Advisory last year. Anna Healy, our forester, always talks about how trees are actually quite difficult to come by, and they are a little bit more expensive because the tree nursery systems were decimated by the 2008 recession, and they never truly recovered. And it can take decades to, you know, establish these trees, some of the trees. So that's always been a constant problem, us being able to source specific species and also source the, the number of trees that we need at any given time. Because we have such a, such an abundance of land in the city of Fitchburg, I thought we should consider having our own municipal tree nursery. There are some models for this, they're bigger cities. But I think if we could get the startup funding off the ground and, you know, start investing in it, I think down the line, it could save us a lot of money. I mean, we also, that number 135,000 for 400 trees, it would save us money internally for that, and then also, I think, it could be a revenue generator. We could sell to other municipalities and, and generate some money. Anyway, this is a very low priority, but I think it's potentially a good use of one-time money. So I doubt that it will get through in this one, but if you all think it's a good idea, I'd love to have it on the table. So maybe the next TID closure sometime in the future, this would be on the table. So I will definitely bring this as a CIP amendment, but I kind of wanted to get this on the record sooner rather than later.
Very good. Alder Herbst.
I, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea. The few of you that still get the Fitchburg Star might have saw my article this month where I advocated for the same thing. The difference would be, Gabrielle, in my vision, the Parks Department would determine, determine the area. Anna would tell us what type of trees. We would ask neighbors to grow, you know, start these, and we would lay out a grid in the, in the, in the area. And volunteers, neighbors, Boy Scout projects, kids in grade school would start these trees, and we would, we would plant them, and we would have, you know, volunteers to kind of oversee this. So I am, I am all with you for doing this, but I, I think we can do it with a volunteer effort, community engagement for, for very low money. If we needed money, it might be to get one of those, those diggers that gets the tree out. I don't know if the city has one of those. But if, if we were going to have a nursery, I, I think that's where, where we would need the money. Thank you. But I, I agree with your concept.
Additional questions? Yes, Mayor Richardson.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think, one, you know, we talked about the TID ARPA plan. We talked about things that are kind of one-time costs, and this would be something that isn't a one-time cost. It's an ongoing cost. And so I guess that's one reason why I wouldn't put it in here necessarily. And I guess I also don't know how we would save money only because I think we only plant like 250 trees a year. And, you know, if we did this, we'd have to probably add at least one staff person to run it, and that person's going to cost over $100,000 a year. And then, you know, 200, 300 trees is going to be about $100,000, plus the upfront costs and stuff like that. So I guess I just don't know where the savings would come from. If it's from growing more and selling them, then I worry about competing with businesses like K&amp;A Greenhouse and other Fitchburg businesses. like K&amp;A Greenhouse and other Pittsburgh businesses. That's something that I don't know that we should do. And I don't know how old actually the trees are that we plant. I'm guessing five years. So it's going to be five years before we would even start seeing that benefit. So we're already if it costs even $100,000 a year, we're already half a million dollars in the hole before we get trees. So I guess that's just I I think it'd be great if it would work, but I just don't see where the economics are helping that.
I definitely think this is a back-five CIP it's project. And I understand that there would be a lot of things that have to be done, and our Forest Department probably have to expand prior to this. I do think that and I understand the ongoing costs, I think, but I think the upfront cost for it, whether that be land acquisition or actual like planting of trees, there would be an initial investment that would have to happen. And that, I think, would be the candidate for money. Obviously, there'd have to be a plan to put in the operating budget. But anyway, it's kind of a dream, and I I think that there's a lot of variables. But I I think that we could plant a lot more trees than we are planting. We're just limited by the budget. So, yeah, we only plant 200 trees a year. We could do a lot more than that if we wanted to and if we were able to budget-wise. And also, I I'm not certain that we are sourcing trees from local greenery, maybe Scott, I don't know if Scott's still listening in, but I'd be I can find out where we source them, but I'm not sure that they're from the local greenery. So I'm not sure that we'd be I mean, I my dream maybe would be we'd sell to other municipalities, you know, like be instead of selling not selling to individuals or to businesses, but sell to municipalities like other like McFarland or City of Madison and make some money from other surrounding places. Anyway, that's all.
You mentioned there are other models, Alder, that I believe you said were successful. Do you know what those models are?
I can get more information from Anna. She thinks that there is that the city of Milwaukee might have something similar to this. Obviously, they're a bigger city. But I this actually would be kind of a unique idea.
I'd be curious because I thought Milwaukee, I knew they had one at one time, but I'm not sure if they do anymore. So I would be curious if that's still the case.
Yeah, I can ask Anna to look into that and see if she can figure it out.
All right. Additional discussion? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the next amendment.
So add.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Add traffic calming in District in District 1, probably outside of the second. Am I am I off one here? No.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Randy. Outside of picking up garbage, the the second concern of residents expressed to me is is speeding and danger of the children in our in District 1. And what this the city has limited, you know, we put money in the budget for traffic calming, but it it amounts to one, maybe one spot a year, you know, there's not enough. So we've identified, let me count here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We've identified six. I identified four, and Alder Maldonado identified two that we would like to install traffic calming. These would be the concrete triangular type 1, similar to what Madison does. It costs about $30,000 to put one in. And the locations we proposed, and again, this has still has to follow the process, you know, it has to qualify as far as the median speed and and neighborhood engagement. But the locations listed are Monticello Way, Williamsburg Way, Lower King James Way, Crescent Road, Red Arrow Trail, and Apache. So that's all.
Discussion? Alder Maldonado, you have the floor.
And then just to remind the council, this is we had Andrew McFadden tabulate all the emails and calls that have come from residents on specific locations. So that's sort of the rationale behind why the specific locations were.
I I would also add, I'm sorry on the turn, but, you know, in discussions with the chief, you know, we talked about the speeding, and, you know, we both agreed that police enforcement is temporary. And he he asked, he said, well, if you can, as an alder, you can do things to eliminate the need for us to have to be doing speed enforcement. That's a win for win for all of us.
Yes, Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thanks. I I think this is certainly very important. I I'm curious, is there a plan to pay for this with the money we we put towards roads already? Or is that is it more about the timeline? Or these are not on the table at all?
They're not they're not on the they're not on the table at all. It's it's a pro you have to go through, you know, the neighborhood or the street. It's it's a process, traffic study, you have to gather signatures, you know, process you go through, and it has to be started. And and three of these, we've we've got people working on them right now already, neighbors. But it, you know, we really don't we we don't have much budget in the city to to do a lot of these a year. Like I say, one, maybe, maybe two. So we're we're trying to trying to use this one-time money in a in a way to make a big bang, to prove safety in our in District 1.
Alder Maldonado, go ahead.
Yeah, Dave, just a minor amendment. I think the green painted crosswalk.
Oh, yeah.
If that's the one that I added, it would actually be on, what's the name of that street? Where the Mad Power is. I'm blanking on it, but it's right down Anton Drive.
Anton Drive, yeah, it's Anton Drive. I believe it would be Anton Drive. Yeah. I didn't see that, Joe, I'm sorry.
I believe Alder Allen had his hand raised.
Yeah, and this is specific to this amendment, but also just generally with several other amendments. When we get to the point of actually voting on these in a couple of weeks, can we can we get some visuals with like maps to show where these specific projects are?
Good comment, Jay. I'll I'll get Andrew to get that put together for us.
I would ask if any alders are making requests of staff, that they include me in any requests, so that I'm aware of how many requests are being made and what their current workload is and other priorities that they may have. I think we can certainly look to, in this case, if we're simply looking at a map, do a share screen and and just project a map up and help highlight those areas.
Thank you, Chad. I'm sorry, sorry to be on the turn.
Okay, further discussion. Alder Allen, your hand is still raised. Do you have an additional question or?
Oh, I can fix that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing hearing none, moving on. Amendment number 15. Remove CIP number 1006, new financial system. And Alder Rodafrada, you are the sponsor. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, sure. So so I hope you understand why I'm trying to do this. It's, you know, I I am very in favor of having financial system to make the city system and process more efficient and streamlined, and also with the ultimate goal to automate all the tasks. You know, I I don't take it personally, Misty, is I I I need to find more money to to funnel through the hub project. This 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 project is already in the CIP for 2025. It's already $900,000. Is in the CIP is considered like a priority label, like a less important. So it's not, you know, I understand that there is a need to improve the process and procedure inside the city. But I also am looking for a balance between what are the external and internal needs that we can use these ARPA funds? And the so my my recommendation is to keep it in the CIP, the project, and and free up this $900,000 that we can use to fund some of the parks, infrastructure project. That's all.
Mayor Richardson, comment?
Yeah, I guess I just think that I think we're better off using something like ARPA funds if we can instead of borrowing for this. I think the more we can reduce our reliance on borrowing, the better off we are. And also creates more flexibility in the future for other things that undoubtedly will come up, things like the salt shed that has to get replaced. And who knows what? I can't predict 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 what that will be. But to me, it seems like it is an important thing, it is in the CIP, and to be able to not rely on borrowing for this, I think, is a great strategy financially.
Yes, Alder Wheeler, go ahead.
This question is for Misty. Misty, what do we gain by moving this up from 2027? I'm looking at in the CIP.
So it was originally requested for 2022, and is one of those things that keeps having to get delayed for other projects. Right now, it is in 2027. But even when we delayed it to 2027, we included a note that it should be considered for TID funding. It was getting delayed because there wasn't the levy for it. Even then, kind of recognized that this would be a good match for it. Right now, the accounting software that we're using is designed for, I'll say, much smaller communities than what Pittsburgh is. Besides that, this actual software is no longer enhanced. They have a new version. So right now, they're letting us kind of limp along, and they'll still support us. But I don't know how much longer that is going to be an option. So I don't think 2027 is actually even a realistic plan. There's other pieces to this same ARPA plan funding, which is for a bunch of other kind of different softwares that would be really enhance the the systems for the city. And while those are very important and not necessarily tied to the ERP system, I think it's a better project if we could look at all of those at the same time. It would give us a bit more efficiencies to make sure that everything is working together and is interfacing the the best way that it can. You know, the decisions on the different pieces might vary depending on what financial software we ultimately end up with. But the things that we would improve would be transparency, there's budgeting software, there's enhanced processes that we could do that would make it easier for both the public, the finance staff, and the department.
Thanks.
Administrator Brecklin, go ahead, you have the floor.
Yeah, I would just also like to add, you know, a lot of these process improvement initiatives that were included in the mayor's investment plan were identified as ways to obviously improve the efficiency and information and service that we provide to our community. And one thing that I've noticed in the short time that I've been in this role is some of our our software applications in certain areas are are not really indicative of a city of 30,000 people. They're more indicative of of our population when we are probably transitioning from a township into a city. So these things were included, thankfully, for consideration by the council in an effort to to bring us into contemporary times and also to set us up for the future from a from a software application perspective in certain areas.
Additional discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next amendment. Amendment number 16. Add funding to upgrade park shelter to solar shelter. Alder Gerhart, you are the sponsor. You want to speak to your amendment?
Yes, thank you. I kind of previewed this a little while ago, but a solar shelter, I I can bring I can send pictures out, but I I visited one last year for the very first time. They have one in Madison, and they're they're exactly what they sound like. They're a park shelter, but the roof is made up entirely of solar panels. Not only is it obviously adding solar panels to our our city grid, but it actually is very beautiful. I I'll send you pictures because I I think it's actually kind of a lovely park amenity. I I actually was thinking when I saw it for the first time, I was like, oh, that's the kind of place that someone would get married under, like that in my personal opinion. Maybe I would. I guess I assume other people would. I guess I can't guarantee that. But anyway, I I think it could be an interesting amenity to a park. We're going to do park shelter replacements. Might be we're going to add one to the hub. Maybe the Tower Hill replacement's going to happen soon. I think it could be interesting to put a little bit more funding in, make it a solar shelter, add more solar panels to our grid, and add a really unique and beautiful amenity to the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Discussion?
Just a quick question. Is this what they did at Lake Farms Park? Are these are the little solar solar shelters?
I will double-check. I the one I saw was in the maybe it's the Lunny Lake Farm Park? Is that the same park?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that's the one.
Okay. All right, moving on. Amendment number 17. Add funding to add solar panels. Yes, Alder Gerhart.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. So I mean, I think this is I just kind of want solar panels to be on the table. I think we we talked about adding, we're looking at adding them for the lift station. Obviously, solar panels always come with an upfront investment that is paid back over time by the energy savings. So I do think that one-time funding for solar panels is is kind of great because you immediately start reaping the cost benefits. So this is a little bit of a generic amendment, but I I think I would just like solar panels to be on the table for this funding if the opportunity arises to add them somewhere in the city.
Discussion? Seeing none, moving on. Amendment number 18. Add funding to update street lighting. CIP number 3479. And Alder Gerhart.
Yeah, so this really is to I pulled this directly from the CIP, and I know I just recently found out that Phil Groupie, our sustainability specialist, has put in grant funding to fund this. And it basically is to transition our streetlights over to LEDs, very straightforward, but it saves us monthly costs. And the sooner we do it, obviously, the sooner we reap the cost savings. But the benefit of having this one-time-use funding is we get that immediate cost savings. And because we have potential grant funding coming, I'm not clear on whether or not it requires a match, but I I think this should be on the table.
Discussion? Seeing none, moving on to amendment number 19. Add funding for hub phase 1. Alder Rodafrada, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yeah, sure. So so this is an amendment to to add additional funding to the hub phase. I I would make a when I when I did this, I I my idea was to incorporate add more money, $200,000 is is no, it wasn't my ideal, but this is what it is. So but I list if we can fund the, you know, the all-wheel-track cost that we are we have a gap on funding, so that will be great. So so we just discussed this item in, you know, in the previous hour, so how we can use some of this ARPA fund to also to allocate to the to this project.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to amendment number 20. Add additional HNI grant funding. Rodafrada, Alder Rodafrada, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, sure. This was came also from the Healthy Neighborhood Committee meeting discussion. So every year, we try to add more funding to the Healthy Neighborhood Grant Program. But so this is our opportunity to allocate at least $50,000 for 20 to add $50,000 more to 23, 24, and 25. So so I think that we can see we have seen lately that the request of funding is more than the $50,000 or $60,000 that sometimes we have allocated to the grant. So we know that the needs are more in these areas, in our Healthy Neighborhood areas. So and I we the Healthy Neighborhood Committee believes that this ARPA fund are a good use for this grant award.
Alder Maldonado, go ahead.
No, more of a comment. This is actually something that's specifically spelled out in the guidance from the federal government, specifically sort of funding to community-based organizations. So I just wanted to point that out.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? I I do have one. What is this? I mean, we've in the past, we've had additional dollars that we haven't spent. I mean, is this taken not into consideration? We're are we spending all of our dollars at this point? I mean, we just we just had a, well, I'll say, lack of better words, a surplus because not all of the 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 grants that were awarded were were that money was utilized. Am I correct in that?
Can I?
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
Yeah, some during the 2020 with COVID, some of the non-for-profit that we are we fund, some of the non-for-profit, but they couldn't they couldn't do the the programming because of COVID. And then this is why there is there is like a we didn't allocate they didn't we didn't use those funds because they they couldn't do the programming at that time. And then sometime what happened is some of the organization don't finish or And then sometime what happened is some of the organizations don't finish one of the milestones, so the city doesn't give the second check. Maybe Misty, you can help me with this. And sometimes it's timing too on the project. So, but usually sometime we have left over, it could be, I don't know, it depends, ten thousand dollar, fifteen thousand dollar because the, the, some of the activity are not performed or there was an issue with the organization or, or timing. I don't know, Misty, if you.
I guess the only thing I could add is there, we, as part of the carryover process, which was the resolution that was referred out last night, healthy neighborhood grants that are either allowed an extension would be included on that list as well as funding that was not used and would be going back into the general pool that has been included on the carryover resolution the last several years.
All right, additional discussion. Oh, yes, go ahead, Alder.
Yeah, I forgot to, yeah, I forgot to mention, Randy, that the intention with the Healthy Neighborhood Committee also to fund, you know, less, fewer organizations, but giving them more money, okay, too? Because it's, it's more efficient.
Okay, additional discussion before moving on. Hearing none. Moving on to amendment number twenty-one. Add funding for Little John's Restaurant. And Alder Aratafrada, you are the sponsor. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. As you know, if you read the, the ruling for ARPA, it talks a lot about food insecurity, okay? Especially in what they call qualified census tract areas. As you know, Little John is a not-for-profit. If you read the justification, you know, there is a lot of information there. What they're trying to do is to secure few food for, for, you know, for people that really they cannot afford to buy or pay, or to get access to food. So, so as Little John is a not-for-profit, they are in the, in the capital funding, capital campaign right now. The, the goal is to raise six million dollars to put in full operation, the, the site on Verona Road that is in the city of Fitchburg in District One, in one of the healthy neighborhood area. So they, they need to buy a lot of equipment, you know, to, for the, for the, so the kitchen can be fully operated. So I receive a list of all the equipments. And I have an idea, an average, one of the big equipment costs around, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. So the idea is how the city of Fitchburg can help this not-for-profit that they are also providing a lot of services and food in our, in our city, like funding at least some of the capital expenditure on equipment. So, so, so this is why, you know, I think this ARPA fund could be a good use for, 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 to focus in food insecurity area, so.
Thank you. Since they're a nonprofit, have they already applied for a grant? Do they not have a grant through H and I currently? Or do they have, have they requested dollars, I guess I should say, or asked?
Yeah, they have one. They applied last year for the first time, but it's almost, I see, nine to ten thousand dollar. And it was for, but it wasn't for capital expenditure. It was for, because I don't think one of the requirements, I don't think is you, they can spend money in capital expenditure with the, the Healthy Neighborhood Grant. So, but they received last year almost ten thousand dollar.
Sure. Questions, discussion? Seeing none. Moving on. To make sure I have my space here. Amendment number twenty-two. Add funding for Fitchburg Greenway System. And Alder Aratafrada, you have the floor.
Yeah, so this is something that we want to discuss. And we, we discussing during Parks Commission. We are including this concept of Greenway System in the, in the update of the Parks Guide. And the idea is to, so how to develop the Fitchburg Greenway System. And especially, we want to start with the first initial phase, that is the four to miles in Fish Catchery, what, Greenway. Bike Fitchburg is also behind this and I don't know, and, and they are also, I, I receive the amount of the four thousand five hundred because it's, it's how much it's going to cost to do the fish catching corridor with all the signing, signs. So, so this is a, a, a great idea. And the city is already partnership with the, with Bike Fitchburg. That is a local not-for-profit in the city of Fitchburg and the Fitchburg Chamber of Commerce along with Parks Department. And they're collaborating and developing and implementing this Greenway System. Also, to become a goal bicycle-friendly community, the city need to develop this plan. And also, you know, we are working towards that goal. So I think that one is going to be a, a great addition. And then another way that we can accomplish the goal bicycle-friendly community too.
Discussion. Hearing none. Moving on. Amendment number twenty-three. Add funding for Workforce Accelerator Business Incubator LLC Plaza. Alder Maldonado, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. As you all likely know, the Latino Chamber of Commerce is located here in Fitchburg. They serve, you know, hundreds of people annually through classes, workshops, technical support, you know, both current and emerging members who, you know, are entrepreneurs or will be. And they are looking at relocating into District One. They're currently located on Commerce Drive, which is sort of an industrial area. And they're looking at acquiring a, a building in a, along Verona Road, which is obviously a more residential area. In addition, they're also expanding beyond just Dane County and looking to sort of be a, a organization to serve the whole state. But for this particular space, they're looking at a space that would not only be the site for their offices, but also be a site for emerging businesses, sort of business incubator, as well as a social space. I think this would add tremendous value to the community, both for people that could be potential customers of, you know, vendors, food vendors, you know, other supply vendors, as well as space for education and a space that could be a destination for, you know, people that are, are visiting the area. I spoke with Misty and there was a recommendation that, you know, this may fit better in the TID closure plan. And the expenses that are listed would be for renovation of a space, not for acquisition of a space. It would be a one-time expense that would go towards costs such as, you know, building out a kitchen or, you know, potentially making modifications to the building. And I included a letter of support as an attachment, so that should be included in this packet.
Is, is this a, is this, you mentioned a one-time?
Yes, this would be a one-time expense.
Alder Allen, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, is this, this building where they're looking at, is this the former Ruffing It In Style building?
Correct.
All right.
Additional questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none. We will move on. Amendment twenty-four. Add senior center vehicle. Alder Herps, you are, you have the floor.
Thank you. As you've heard me talk many times, we have a wonderful senior center. And we, it is underutilized. We have many more seniors in Fitchburg. They could be using it, but they have transportation issues, either they don't drive or the, the current system, it would get them there and they'd have to be there too long and just lack of flexibility. And so the, the director asked me to include the amount for a, a van that would have a, it'd have a lift, you know, for handicapped residents. And I'm not quite sure how big it is. This would be through the state, through the state contract, you know, to purchase this. And yesterday, or day before yesterday, I was talking to Jill and the bigger issue, you know, we can get the van, but I don't want to get a van and have to spend a hundred thousand dollars a year in driver's fees and everything else. You know, no one wants to do that. And so I, I was having some discussions with David Gebber the other day. And he said, the Highline, you know, they might be in, they probably could supply it, you know, a driver or volunteers to drive. And so if we would talk to maybe some other of these buildings, you know, we might be able to come up with a, a plan for reasonable transportation without a, a large hit on the taxpayer. So that's, that's why this is included in here.
Very good. Discussion. Yes, Alder Aratafrada, go ahead.
I thought that this, this, the funding for, or the matching fund for this transportation was already included in, in the mayor's proposal. Because I think it's included in the infrastructure. So I, I, you know, I am all in support of this, but I, I am confused that, you know, because I thought that it was included already, so. And the other thing that I agree with you, Dave, that we need to do the calculation about how much are going to be the operational cost.
Absolutely.
But I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea.
No, we're on the same page. We're on the same page.
We, we can use it for other things too.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah, I don't believe I included it because of the ongoing cost piece to it. You know, wanting to make sure to do things that are kind of one-time only costs. There's, even if someone helps donate towards the cost, I just worry about gas insurance, drivers, things like that. There's maintenance, there's a lot of ongoing costs. That's why I wouldn't have put it in there.
Yeah, I, I would say it needs further investigation, you know, to, before we pull the, before we would pull the trigger on this is what I would say. And I'll be working, I'll be working on that.
And is this something that, maybe it's a question for Misty, but is there a possibility of federal funds to, to support such a purchase or? Not sure, don't know?
Yes. So I know Jill and the senior center, Andrew and Public Works have been working together to try to figure out a variety of different options. I believe they're planning to present to you guys in the relatively near future. But yes, we do expect that there'll be some federal funds available. Not exactly sure what that would look like or what pieces it would go towards, but it is on their radar.
Okay, very good. Alder Aratafrada, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to clarify something because I remember Misty, when I talked to you about this too, you mentioned that, I, I read in the mayor proposal, it was included something about transportation for the senior center.
Yep, so the piece that would be matching funds for a federal.
Okay, okay, so it's there, okay, okay.
So there's a piece that talks about matching funds and there's a whole list of different things that could be possible matches that would be required. And transportation was one of the many items listed as a, a possible candidate.
Additional discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. That will conclude, excuse me, conclude our amendments for the, the evening. Misty, would you like to make any comments to, to close?
Yes, please. So this was the conversation to talk about the amendments. Next step is the March twenty-second council meeting, so not the next one, but the one after that. We will start with a public hearing where the public can come in and share their thoughts on the amendments that were proposed. We will have our normal council meeting with everything that's on there. And then we will have the similar process to CIP and budget where we'll go through amendment by amendment. You'll be able to make amendments to the amendment. So if you wanted to change the dollar amount or add or remove something that's within the amendment that's proposed, that would be allowed. And then we'll vote on each one of the amendments. At the end of the night, we will vote on the resolution adopting the investment plan. Remember, this is just a very first step in the overall process. It still needs to go through CIP or budget or something like that. I do, this came up at Finance Committee last night. I wasn't intending to ask you or recommend to you that you have special rules as far as how many times you can talk and timelines and that stuff, like we do at Budget Time. We don't have those special rules at CIP, so I didn't think they were necessary for the ARPA investment plan. But if council's interested in something like that, I guess, reach out to me and I can put together a proposal for council to act on at the time. That's the next step then, public hearing and then voting.
Very good. Let's move on to, given the, the late hour. Item seven, announcements. Next meeting of the whole, committee of the whole meeting is March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, motion carries. We are adjourned at nine forty-eight PM. Thank you.